Just in time, Bill.
At six o'clock.
Okay, this is the November ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Village of Norman Board and Trustees. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any doubt.
Thank you, please be seated. All right, as you can see, we've got a really full agenda tonight. Uh, but let's take care of a little, some administrative before we get to the, uh, resolution issue. So, um, first off, Sarah, can we do a roll call of trustees?
Mayor Colpe?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Cantino?
Here.
Trustee Herzog?
Here.
Trustee Arbogast?
Here.
Trustee Dora?
Here.
Okay, thank you. So, um, Sarah's getting orderly efficient here. She sent out the minutes for the last meeting back on October twentieth. Has the board had the chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections, additions?
No.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
A motion.
And a second?
A second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Let's go to the notches and we'll come back to the resolution. So here's the vouchers, the unpaid vouchers for this month. The general fund, one hundred ninety-one thousand, for the water fund, eighty-six thousand, for the sewer fund, fifty-one thousand, a total of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And let's see, the note she's got here includes the, uh, funding for the paving of North Avenue, which we're gonna get chips from Inversion for. A ten thousand dollars for tree removal and a ten thousand dollars bill for grinding the sidewalks. Now, one comment is Bob's out sick, but Mike, if we had took a, take a look at the tree removal budget, we're way over.
Right.
All right? If we're gonna figure out some way to accommodate that, probably go into the donations category and move some money from there.
Sure.
The only other issue I want to say to the covered heads is only make sure that when you are, um, purchasing items that are above five hundred dollars, it would be very helpful if you submitted the procurement form that includes either three bits, as the process requires, if it's over five hundred dollars, or a statement to the fact that it was in the budget that was approved, or that was, um, state funded. All right? I would appreciate having a piece of paper. The procurement form will be best to just say those words on it that Nicole can then file with her invoice, so they've got a record for the future. All right? Any questions or comments about that?
No.
Everybody's okay with that? That just helps us from a tracking point, so I appreciate that. And the only other thing I want to say about the budget is, um, I asked Karen and Sarah to put together a six-month, um, analysis for us in January. So this is, November's our sixth month. They wanted to take an additional month to December and to January. So the January meeting will have a six-month review of the budget versus actuals. All right? Okay, based on that, any other questions from the trustees regarding the vouchers?
No.
Can I get a motion to accept the vouchers? And a second?
A second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. All right, the next topic on the agenda is the, uh, resolutions regarding hookups to the village water and sewer. So last month, we had a, uh, a brouhaha regarding actually what I think is a mixing of two different issues we've got. One of them is, we had, um, presented to the public a resolution to allow sewer-only hookups for those lots in the town that met certain criteria with a special fee associated with the calculation we got from Bill Bright. We convoluted that with an issue which was, um, um, brought up separately, which is associated with different lots that were on a pre-approved list from Mayor Hurley, going back to two thousand and ten. And so at the meeting, I said, I would get a separate meeting for, uh, Bill to explain to Skip the rationale behind the special fees that were assigned. We had the meeting, at the meeting, Skip explained to Bill the, um, specifics of prior history in terms of what had happened there, as well as the fiscal situation about what's going on on those lots that are in that Hurley memo. And based on that, uh, Bill did a review of the documentation, uh, did a review of, uh, prior work that was done, and asked him to bring to the board his conclusion of the analysis and his recommendation regarding whether or not those fees should still apply. And again, we're gonna talk about the lots that are in the Hurley memo. So Bill, if you could take the floor on that? Can you eat them on camera?
If you stand over there.
Or stand up by the screen?
Yeah, by the screen.
How's that? So. But just a question, why is the light red? Is that okay?
Yes, it means it's recording.
Okay, fine.
So.
Just announce yourself, Bill Bright, Delaware.
Bill Bright worked with Delaware Engineering. We do the engineering work for the Water and the Sewer District, Water and Sewer Systems. I reviewed the, the data that I had, all of the old, uh.
Can you speak louder?
I reviewed the information, uh, about the nine lots, and what I, what I had found was those nine lots were previously approved, uh, in nineteen eighty-six, and they were also connected to the system in nineteen eighty-six. And, and that was bore out by the fact that they, they are certified. There's an engineering certification by the village engineer, there's an engineering certification by the county health department, uh, and the town approved it. So that indicates to me that those nine lots were already connected to the sewer system. I mean, the, the laterals are on the property, the water main is on the property, everything that is, that I would consider, uh, a connection, that we would consider a connection, plus the fact they paid the village all of their fees, the inspection fees.
At that time, many years ago.
At the time, yeah. So they followed every, they followed all the laws and every, all the rules, and, and they are connected as far as, as far as we're concerned.
Okay.
And, and so the nine Hurley lots, then, they have really nothing to do with the resolution.
Okay. What's, more specifically, this goes back to the resolution we passed last year regarding those lots. I think you're also saying that those special fees that we described then should not apply?
No.
Okay. All right.
And, and, and going forward, and I don't know how many there are, if there are any other lots that are, that are of similar situation where there is a, a lateral on the property or a water line on the property, we would consider that a connection too because, in order for that to have taken place, they would have had to been certified, it would have had to been inspected, and they would have had to been, uh, uh, fees, all the fees for those inspections, uh, would have had to have been paid, so.
Okay.
But we'll, but we obviously will, I mean, if there are other applications or things like that, we'll, we'll look at them individually.
All right, so I want to do, do two things. First off, let's talk about the, uh, the resolution from last year. First off, first off, does the board have any questions about what Bill just said?
Yeah.
I guess Puffy had it in the closer, but any questions about what you said in this conclusion?
I have one question.
Yeah.
So in terms of, in your opinion, Bill, um, is connected mean laterals into the property only?
Well, if the laterals are into the property and it's on an as-built drawing and the fees have been paid, then I can, I would consider that.
So all three of those things, I guess, equals connected?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my problem, is I had, I had a hard problem saying it's connected when there's not a house there.
Yeah.
Okay.
We got through that.
Okay. Okay. All right. So anyway, um, based on that, now I want to just stay on the, the nine lots in the Hurley memo. Uh, what Sarah and Ian had recommended, well, the, the board's got the, um, actual proposal. What I'm recommending is that we not rescind the resolution, this is twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, uh, that we passed last year, that had the special fees in it. And so what, what Ian and Sarah had recommended is that they, I can read it from up there.
Do you want, you want a hard copy? It's, it's in your packet.
Yeah. I want to read it to the audience, yeah. What they recommend is that we amend the resolution from last year to say in red at the top, the following resolution amends and restates as amended the resolution adopted by the village board on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, to remove section three of the previously adopted resolution. In section three, you can see it crossed out here, this is a section that talks about the special fees. All right? The reason why I'd like to do that as opposed to rescind it and add another resolution this year is because I don't want there to be a hole that ten years from now, somebody else is gonna fall into. So this way, the, you know, the, uh, paper trail is intact.
Any other thing?
And that we would then vote now to accept this amendment to the resolution. And that follows the letter of the law.
Correct, and then your, the public record is clear on what the board.
Intends, yeah.
Yeah.
So does the board have any questions or comments about that?
No. I have one question about the last sentence of the first part of the resolution, starting with whereas, so the last sentence being connection fees also adopted only apply to non-village applicants that have been pre-approved by a memo from Mayor Hurley. Based on what Bill just said, I don't think that sentence applies anymore. It's not just those pre-approved lots, it's any lots that laterals into the property has been inspected and fees have been paid. So I think that last sentence should be struck from this resolution based on Delaware's definition of connected.
Okay. Yeah.
Because we're still going back with the Hurley letter and the Hurley lots, and it seems like.
Yeah, I'm trying to set the Hurley lot, you know, Hurley lots aside and say that's good, it stands by itself, and let's talk about the other lots. However, I think he's got a point.
Yeah, it kind of conflicts with it.
Yeah.
So, the other point. You draw a line through it like you did the other paragraph.
Okay.
The other, the other thing I wanted to just make clear that these approvals go with the lot. I mean, that, that's, I mean, those lots, whether, it doesn't matter who owns them.
Okay.
Those, that approval goes with the lot.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make that clear because I've heard around that once Skip sells the lots, we can assess a fee to the new owner.
Well, that was my opinion, yeah, that was.
All right, well.
That's two weeks old.
Can we make it clear that it goes with the property?
I'm learning.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's clear.
Yeah.
And I think Bill now has got his antenna up, so if I ever try something like that again, it'll catch, just catch me early.
Okay.
Promise? Yeah. All right, so look, what about Peter's suggestion, we, we strike that, that sentence right there? Connection fees also adopted only apply to non-village applicants that have been pre-approved by a memo from Mayor Hurley dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, twenty ten.
And, and to Bill's point, I don't know if it's here or somewhere else, maybe it makes sense to define connected or define whatever word we're gonna use for this, so it's, again, clear and it's.
He's got it defined pretty well in his memo to you, but, uh.
Okay.
But, uh, could be put someplace else than it, but Peter's thought.
Like a defined term.
In the, directly in the resolution?
I don't know where, where else we go.
What he's suggesting is we, we find a place to define connection.
You can, I mean, you could add, you could do a connection in the definition and just explain what a definition is if you want that included.
Or we could just reference your memo.
Could be that.
The memo's pretty clear.
Yeah, the, uh.
Let's do that then.
And we can pass.
Yes. All right, so Sarah, can we make those modifications to this resolution now? So two modifications, one is to strike through the last sentence of the first paragraph.
Yep.
And the second is to say connection fees are defined in Bill Bright's memo dated whatever it was.
And that was app, that was the memo about our meeting.
That's the meeting, right, yes.
Do you want that as an attachment?
Yes, let's do, yeah.
Yeah, it should go as an attachment.
That'll work, because we're gonna attach the Hurley memo, no, 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 so let's do that too.
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, so based on that, then.
Just, just, just one question. When we took our, our guided tour down Halcyon Road, you showed me where the line was that you would install. I know the line goes from just in front of the Bennett Properties, it goes around Halcyon Road and then makes a turn and goes down into Manor Drive into that area. What kinds of connections have been made to other lots that might still be, let's say, that are not in this memo but are, but are basically along the same sewer line that you installed? So we know going forward, we're not gonna run into someone else who hasn't empty a lot.
Funny you should mention that because that's just come about today. And there's, there's only one lot that has another situation like that. And that's someone that's been here before, is the Evangelista lot.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, that, uh, and I, I dug it up today, find where, where the lateral was, whether it was on the property, what have you. There's a six-inch lateral that goes under Halcyon Road and goes into the Evangelista property. She just had gotten a survey recently, the, the corners are delineated for the lot. You can go down there and eyeball it, I, I think I sent a picture to Tim and Bill with myself measuring, is the lateral is five feet inside the property. That's the only one that's that way. The other three lots, there's three more, or Scott will touch two, Scott was down there this morning with me, just to, just to verify. You know, there's three more lots down Halcyon Road, on the same side of the road, that there is no Y or no lateral to them, because there's a couple of manholes there that are set on, in the, in the right of way. So they'd have to go to the right of way. There, there, there's not a, a per se lateral like we're talking about for the Maple Hill subdivision and the Evangelista property. That's the only one. There's two lots on the, on the east side of Halcyon Road that could get sewered or possibly they're, they're on the route. They, there's just a Y there, it's still in the right of way, it's not into the property. So you don't have that problem going forward. And they're the only lots that are left down there before you have a completed system. And I doubt whether they'll ever get on anyway, it's been this long and they've never indicated they wanted to, to, to join years ago, and I think they're still that way today. So the Evangelista lot, uh, and it just so happened today that it came to be, I, uh.
All right, so that's fine. So I want to, again, keep the lots in this resolution clean, separate, standalone. Let's fix this, all right, with the vote by the board, all right, and we put this to bed. So Sarah, can you do a roll call? What kind of words do I have to say? This is to amend the resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, as described in document.
Amending and restating, uh, resolution twenty twenty-one thirteen.
Okay, good, roll call?
Mayor Colpe?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Trustee Herzog?
Aye.
Trustee Arbogast?
Aye.
Trustee Dora?
Aye.
Okay, good. All right, so that's that resolution. Now let's go to the one that was introduced at the last meeting. So at the meeting we had offline, you agreed that it, those lots should receive a special fees. Now we got some new news from Skip today, saying there may be other lots.
Yeah, I would deal with them as a, as an application is made.
So if that's true, then why do we even need this resolution? Resolution was to apply for lots which may want to come and hook up in the future. Was motivated by Lisa, but, you know, based on this discussion and the revision of the number of eligible lots, why isn't this a one-by-one deal, that if someone wants to apply, they come in and make an application?
Yeah, you've already established the procedure in the last resolution for, for today, so I don't, I think you're right.
So why can I just, why can we just eliminate this resolution, is what I'm suggesting? Because it doesn't really hold any water, we didn't, we go through the same process anyway.
I don't have that resolution in front of me.
It was at the last meeting? They weren't, yeah.
Yeah, well, part of, part of the resolution that, and I think it's important to note, and, uh, Peter had brought this up at one of the meetings that we had, discussing this when Lisa and Evangelista was here, is that the resolution was supposed to apply to lines that were already in the ground, so that obviously lines that had been put in by Skip were covered, and that there could be other hookups later on, and that was part of the idea, but what.
Okay.
But part of the resolution was also making it clear that we were not looking to invite other developers to come in and be able to then hook up by running infrastructure and then saying, well, the infrastructure is there now, we want to, want you to hook, want, you know, out of town.
But that discussion happened anyway, regardless of this resolution, right?
Yeah, and, but that.
They can't do that, they'd have to come here for approvals.
Right. You know, they'd do it before they come here, then it's their, their dime.
Like I said before, there's only five more parcels down there that can get on the sewer.
Five?
Five more, other than Lisa Evangelista.
Okay.
And she, I mean, in my mind, she's connected.
And every time we talk, the number goes down?
No, 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 it's a final call, I got the map like we're gonna kill you. All right, the map I keep telling you about.
Okay.
Scott knows.
All right, so look, so, um, any problem with what I'm proposing is that we, what do we do, we can the resolution or something?
Well, there isn't a resolution.
We don't have to, don't vote it down, we can just remove it?
You don't have to do anything. You, you, when you say you introduced it, you just handed it out.
All right, so I'll make a proposal that we remove this resolution, can I get a second?
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. All right, Bill, before you leave, I want to ask, I want you to get an update on the retaining wall, the property owners adjacent to.
Do you have one more thing?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, Gary.
If I, if I have to just take a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Just a minute, um, I'm here in my official capacity, uh, representing Lisa since she is, is shortly becoming a town resident. And, and it has to do with everything that we've talked about.
Wait, you're, you're representing Lisa, what?
She's a town resident.
She's gonna be a town resident.
Supervisor of the town.
I know she's a, the assessor of the town, I don't know.
She's a constituent of this.
Yeah.
Okay, but why are you speaking for her, she can't speak?
Uh, she can, she asked me if I would.
All right, fine.
Um, and there's a letter and some drawing pictures here that she wants you to have.
Okay. Why?
Why?
Yeah, why? All right, yeah. My God.
I mean, we just got done talking about her, her connection to her property.
Right.
That's what this is about.
Okay.
That's the why.
Okay.
There's a letter that she wants you to have.
All right.
Just want to be clear that when the time comes for her to, to do the, the building, that she will not be charged with fees that have been discussed.
So here's what I think it is, Gary, that when she comes forward with an application, that it'll be forwarded to Bill, who will then do whatever due diligence he did like on the Hurley memos.
She doesn't need an application.
I'm sorry?
She doesn't need an application, she's already connected. That's the difference. That's why he wants to read the letter.
Well, she'll need a building permit.
Right, right. She'll need a building permit, but she, she won't need a, a, a water and sewer application, because she's already, she's presenting this letter as a connected.
The letter states that it's already connected.
So let her read the letter.
Okay.
Mind if I read it real quick?
Yeah, sure.
In its address to you.
Okay.
Uh, it says, "In reference to the permit application for sewer hookup that I submitted earlier this year, I wish to readdress the necessity of this application. I was informed by you earlier this year that this application was needed. At that time, you and I both were not aware that there was an existing connection on my property. I certainly did not know this since there was an existing border health application for water and sewer for this parcel."
Excepted.
Excepted. When I purchased it in twenty twenty-one. "In light of information I have since learned, I question if an application is necessary, being the connection is existing on my parcel and has been since the eighties when the South Branch sewer infrastructure was developed, uh, by Mr. Seferin. Please find the enclosed picture showing the presence of a sewer line tapped at Halcyon Road and Route three forty-three, now known as forty-three dash forty-five Halcyon Road. Also, the tap extends approximately five feet onto my property. I respectfully request you review this with your trustees and advise with your sources, Delaware Engineering and BRI, confirming that the South Branch connections are complete where taps are existing, therefore no further approvals and applications would be needed. Also, precedence exists that other residential parcels on the South Branch tapped their lines without any additional application fees needed. In addition, approximately five residential parcels were added to the South Branch post the nineteen ninety-one sale to the village. Also, without additional approvals or fees paid to the village, three of which occurred on Halcyon Road in the nineties across the street from my property, where Maple Hill parcels are considered approved and connected, the same would apply to other parcels on the South Branch that also have existing connections on their property since the eighties. Therefore, I see no grounds to differentiate Maple Hill from Halcyon and County House Road relative to going online. In addition, I have a tap that exists within my property boundaries, unlike some parcels on its branch that have taps in the right of way." Says initially, "Your concern with my property being developed with capacity. I attended a village meeting a few months ago addressing the question of capacity with BRI and Delaware Engineering, which determined that capacity is not an issue and essentially negligible adding residential property here and there to the system. Please advise this at your earliest convenience. I am currently working on a site plan and need to finalize my plans in the near future in order to stick to my scheduled construction this spring and accompanying that are just the pictures that we're taking today."
All right, so I'll, I'll take that, actually, I prefer an electronic version of it, if I can get that, and I'll then forward that to Bill and ask him to respond back in time. All right?
This, uh. These are the pictures right here, okay?
All right, good. You said, do you, your electronic version of this?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, um.
The wall.
Yeah, so I wanted to know the status, so the, the residents who have the property bonding, the retaining wall, were complaining about the, um, landscaping. And so just tell the board what you've done.
We reached out to the contractor, they're, they're supposed to come and take a look at it and then get back to us. Uh, I, I inspected it and, uh, it's a little rough. I mean, it, what, what we think happened is, is there's a pipe that runs, that we installed right along the wall to drain the water that might come off, and, and I think that's settled a little bit, and, uh.
Actually settled towards the wall, so it's kind of like a.
We created a ridge.
Yeah.
So, uh, we'll see what the contractor, he's gonna take, take a swing by and they're gonna get back to us and then we'll.
So the plan is to have the contractor come and fix the problem. Uh, Sarah will show you in the, um, accounts, there is a couple thousand dollars more if need be, but first we're gonna have the contractor do their thing. And this might roll over into next year, like if they need to grade and then seed.
You can't do that.
Yeah.
You can't seed it now, it's frost.
Okay, fine. But I appreciate you guys stepping up and going to take a look and take some pictures and get a contract involved. Questions about that?
Did you just say what that was, we couldn't hear, there was talk, I couldn't hear?
Yes, regarding the property adjacent to the retaining wall on Front Street that just had, we, we spent three hundred thousand dollars to repair the retaining wall this summer, and then the contractor was supposed to grade the land. They did, they graded it, they seeded it, but there's been some settling. And so the property owners asked that, that we go and fix that settling. And so what I did is asked Delaware to get the contract and go review it and come back and do some.
So it's private property?
Yes, private property. All right?
Well, and we made another inquiry to, worldwide on the, to repair the, the damage on the tank.
Okay, that's where the guys who, uh, from Verizon went and replaced the antennas on our water tower this, this summer, uh, damaged the, the top of the tower.
No, it's about, about ten feet, no, about eight feet up.
Oh, I thought it was, no, oh, okay, fine.
They hit it pretty good.
Oh, okay, yeah, they did. And so they're gonna come back and worldwide's gonna repair it and then we're gonna build the company. They gave me the name of the company for the repair of that.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah. I forged you that note today.
Okay.
All right. Any questions about that?
No.
All right, let's move on. Deirdre, are you here?
She was unable to make it tonight, she's got multiple county meetings she has to attend.
Okay, yeah, she usually switches with us, so that's fine. Okay, Ted, and I see Matt's here too.
Oh, her total's on the screen. It's not my fault, I turned my report in when she asked.
All right.
It's on the call. Uh, total of eighty-nine alarms for October, eighteen automatic alarms, sixty-three EMS calls, one motor vehicle accident, one wired down call, one carbon monoxide call, one good intent, three structural fires, and one brush woods fire. Uh, the paid ambulance went out forty-one times, the volunteer ambulance went out ten times, the membership responded to assisted paid ambulance thirty times. We went mutual aid elsewhere for fire calls twice and for EMS calls ten times. And we had mutual aid come here once for a fire call and six times for EMS calls.
Ten EMS mutual aids? That's a lot.
It was a tough month.
Anybody in particular, or?
It was not any one particular place, just a lot of multiple calls in the district the last few weeks.
All right.
We had a lot of our own too, which is why we had six incoming mutual aids as well. Those are mostly due to the second call in the district.
And just what was the total calls?
Uh, eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, okay. Any questions about that report? So Ted, can you give us an update on the cascade system?
Uh, so I got a quote, not a quote, but a estimate from the insurance company for replacement of the fill station. Exclusive, we had spoken about also upgrading to a compressor.
Hey, Gary, are you gonna listen to this? This is something we're gonna be talking about tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll be right there.
All right, fine, we'll go.
Um, we had spoken about upgrading from a cascade to a compressor, which allows us to compress our own air instead of having to have bottles brought in and constantly refill. That's a significantly higher expense, which obviously the insurance company's not gonna cover because their responsibilities for what we had existed. Uh, so they sent me a quote, an estimate rather, for a replacement of the fill station and the cleaning and repairs to the room based on the work that we had already done and the quote that we had from our vendor for the fill station. The, uh, barring any objection from the village, I'm gonna go ahead and approve that and have them get that checked out. Um, we are still researching a couple of other fill stations, which may be a little more compact and fit our space better. Uh, but if one of those comes in, it'll probably come at a lower price because it'll be less complicated.
All right, so just the board recalls, there was the accident down there in the closet that's right next to the opera's room, and pretty much destroyed, I would say. We don't want to refurbish the system.
It damaged the fill station that we used to fill air bottles for our air packs.
So what Ted said was, it'd be nice if in addition, instead of having all these canisters of air that we put a compressor in there, you got a quote for sixty-nine thousand to do a new cascade system with the compressor, right? Thirty-seven thousand, that's sixty-nine, is the compressor.
Right.
So the difference is thirty-two thousand. Thirty-two thousand happens to be what the insurance is gonna reimburse, right?
That's what they proposed.
So basically, without the compressor, he's able, he's gonna get a new system in there with just the insurance.
Correct.
With a footnote about whether or not they're gonna take out depreciation or something like that.
Yeah, so they rate depreciation from the value of the fill station when we purchased it. Uh, so they're depreciating it at about seventy-eight hundred dollars. So their proposal is that they're gonna give us a check for thirty-two thousand, and at some point they may come back and examine it and say, you know, that we want seventy-eight hundred of that or some portion of that back based on their depreciation.
Okay.
That may or may not happen, I don't know.
But given the age of the system, I'm very happy with the quote we got from the insurance. That's a very good story.
Pretty generous, as far as I'm concerned.
So the idea from a funding point of view would be that you would go forward and put a new system in and work on a multi-year plan to add the compressor, right?
Right.
Okay.
Because I did budget for that this year, obviously.
Right, okay.
But I can start budgeting for that for next year and possibly bond it out. So the remaining balance of that would be the thirty-seven thousand. Uh, so I would look to either bond that out over a couple of years to purchase the compressor or possibly cooperate in some way with the, either the fire department membership or the town.
All right, great.
To, you know, split the cost.
All right, the fact is, this is kind of up in the air, you're not still set yet, so.
I don't think, I don't think that, I want to get the fill station ordered and get our system back in service. Um, and then when we do our budgeting for next year, I'll look into the compressor unless we have, you know, an unexpected funding source before that.
Okay.
I mean, we get donations, so it's possible someone may come in and say, you know, I want to purchase it for you.
All right.
Um, if that occurs, then I'll let you know, obviously.
Well, I'm really glad you're getting a new system, that's really smart.
Either way, I might want to get, you know, back online as soon as possible.
Yeah. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I just, and I'm coming from the perspective that how people should be saved for it.
Yeah.
So just help me understand, how long will it take to get the fill station done?
Uh, I don't know.
And do we need to use, how are we gonna fill the bottles?
So we have, so we're, right now, we're going down to Union Valley Filling Bottles. We, I contacted the chief down there, and they're, they've kindly accommodated us to fill any cascade, or any SCA bottles that we need to. Uh, it'll probably be a couple of months at least. But they're helping us out, which is, we appreciate it greatly.
Well, thank you for funding that term.
Yeah, no, we, we help each other out.
Call that mutual aid.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yep.
I would like to be able to contain this year's budget, we'll talk about the new things for next year's budget. All right, is it, target, okay.
Yep.
All right, any questions, comments? All right, Matt? Can you tell us about the status of the sign?
Uh, I'm not sure yet. Nancy from Glowy Signs called me the other day, she wasn't sure if it was in yet. Um, once it does come in, then the poles will have to be ordered and then the header will have to be ordered, so we're probably looking for another month now.
Oh, is that right, okay. All right, fine. And um, I'm gonna give up.
Second.
Well, the second is the parade of lights. I thought you guys are doing something different at the firehouse on the night.
That's the town of Washington.
Well, that's the town is doing that.
The Santa night is the ninth.
Okay.
Correct, that's the town rec.
All right. All right, fine.
The night of, the night of the parade, after the parade is over, we're having the cornhole tournament here at the firehouse.
Oh, is that right?
Unrelated to the parade.
All right, fine.
What do they have?
Fun race.
A cornhole tournament.
Fun race, cornhole tournament.
All right.
Oh, I think I saw that in the place.
We had one in our block party and it was reasonably successful, see it though in China.
All right, that's good.
But the thing on the ninth is the recreation dogs.
Yeah, that's the town rec.
The town thing, okay.
Gingerbread house making, but they are concluding Santa be here as well.
Okay. So the cornhole is twelve-three?
Two, twelve-two. Right after Santa night is the parade.
Oh, it's twelve-two?
After the parade, yeah. It didn't count.
Oh, all right. Do you want to get us some information? We didn't post it on our village website?
Uh, we have a flyer out we can forward it to.
All right, good. Yeah, let's post that. All right, any questions for the fire? Okay, thanks. Officer Lynn?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, in front of you is the monthly report for October of this year. Traffic tickets, seven. Property damage, auto accidents, we handled three, and an additional vehicle traffic complaint. Uh, we assisted the state police twice, the fire department four times, EMS, seven. Uh, we completed the town of Washington court details, as prescribed. We assisted the central school district four different times with some of their drills, lockdowns and fire drills. Um, and we assisted the highway department on, for the grinding and paving of North Avenue where we were there, with them for most of the day. Uh, we had two trespass complaints and three disturbances. And disturbances may be, not the best word, but I think one of them was a neighbor dispute, the two were like disturbances. We had two lost and found properties, we had five animal complaints, one of which, again, the thing, we had a report of three raccoons stuck in a dumpster down by the, um, yeah, down by the laundromat, a couple dog complaints and some gear complaints, but um, like this, a lot of the random stuff we get, like, not animal control, but by the time we get a hold of animal control and have them come out and we have the equipment in our cars, we have catch poles that we purchased a few years ago to assist with, with stuff like that, just get things done quickly and not expand, you know, extend the other manpower.
And safely, I assume.
Uh, yeah, they're approximately four, four feet long and they have a, you know, retractable cable on it, away they went.
Okay.
Um, two vehicle lockouts, one nine-one-one hangup. Uh, we assisted the citizens twice, performed thirteen school checks, two dedicated foot patrols, and the Halloween detail was completed. That was an uneventful event.
Although we need to talk about next year shutting down some roads.
Yeah, we had discussed, uh.
Actually Franklin, I guess.
Yourself and I had discussed, uh, no parking on one, at least one side of Franklin Avenue, east of Stewart's. Uh, so coming up the, up the hill.
Right.
Where Franklin's a little bit.
Where Narrows.
More narrow. So, uh, I think that's, that was a great suggestion, it's easy, easy to do. We just staple up a couple of signs, you know, the day before, or even as far, a few days before, just to alleviate that.
Yeah, henceforth, we'll make sure we do that. Okay.
But other than that, I think we were successful with Halloween. We do, you know, the village population just about doubles on that.
Yeah. It was uneventful, which is the best kind, so that was good.
Absolutely.
All right, so the numbers are still down. We'll talk about what you've been going to fill the schedule and beef up the coverage.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, so Officer Lyman is experiencing, we're experiencing some difficulties getting some of the uniforms.
This is the new guy that we brought on?
That was supposed to start this month. Uh, we're having some difficulties with the supply chains and getting, getting some of the uniform stuff. I think we're, we're last waiting for boots. He didn't, they didn't have boots in his size, so um, those should be in this week, they were ordered last week, so we can have them on the road as early as, as probably the end of next week. Uh, so that'll help, that'll help fill that in. We've also taken a harder stance on enforcing the shift minimums that each officer is required to work to remain employed here, uh, which is, which is filling a lot more gaps in November than we had in Oc- October?
Yeah.
No, September had the thirty, no, October had.
Well, October, we had thirty-seven percent of the shifts uncovered.
Yeah.
Four.
Um, and November's not, November's looking to be much, much better than that. We've also discussed some, some creative scheduling for the end, for some, if we do see some of the gaps, we'll, you know, see if some officers want to extend into some of those vacant gaps or, you know, come in and just, and fill them in as they, as they can.
Even partially. They probably have, all of our officers have other jobs, so we're trying to, you know, consolidate this with multiple demands, I guess, on their, on their time.
Until, you know, until we fully get Officer Lyman on the road, which will fully eliminate a lot of those gaps, we're gonna just try to accommodate filling any portion of it that we can because there's times that the officers can't commit to the full eight hours, so then they don't take the whole shift.
Yeah.
So I'd rather have them come in for six and a half or seven of the hours rather than leave a whole eight-hour shift uncovered.
All right, so that'll help too.
All right, so also dealing with the, with the numbers, you know, they do, they do appear a little bit down. Uh, trustee Toro had mentioned that, you know, the last month or the month before about some ongoing parking issues, especially downtown, and that those need to be addressed. I spoke with Mayor Collopy about our current park, parking tickets. There are a couple of misprints on it that, um, that prevent them really from being prosecuted at the court. So we're gonna get, we also, I was also waiting to have these tickets reprinted till we finalize the, uh, the traffic and parking code. Uh, but at this point, I think what we're gonna do is get a, get a low number of them reprinted and corrected. And then in the future, once the resolutions for the traffic and parking code have been finalized, we'll, we'll get the, a proper, a larger number of them reprinted.
Okay.
There's just, there is some apprehension by myself and some of the officers to be using it, the ticket with some misprints on it. There are ways around it, it just, it takes, it takes longer to do.
Let's get them fixed.
So we'll, we'll, we'll get a lower number printed now and then a sufficient number when everything's corrected.
Okay.
As for November, we're already on track to surpass, to well surpass the past three months of incidents that have been averaging sixty to sixty-five. We're on track right now for closer to a hundred just for November.
Okay.
So they are coming back up. I have spoken with, you know, with my officers, um, and traffic enforcement is coming back up. We have a refocus on that. So those numbers are coming up. You'll see even in October, seven's not a great number, but it's much higher than it was in September, so.
I mean, there's a fine line between, I don't, I don't want this to be a number generating activity.
Absolutely.
Right, so the focus is on community placing.
Absolutely.
But, you know, given the number of hours that you're out there, there ought to be an expectation of some level of, I guess, repeatable incidents.
Right, there, there should be a level of activity.
Yeah.
Never are, are we going to give anyone a number that says you have to do this, you have to do that? But there should be a level of activity going on per shift. And just my final note on the numbers, and I spoke with, you know, the mayor about this. There are a lot of things that we do as a police agency in the name of community policing. It's just kind of what we do that don't necessarily generate a report and therefore don't generate numbers either. You know, often you'll see the preschool classes out walking around the village, getting their afternoon exercise, you know, things like that, where we help them cross two or three intersections, and it just, it doesn't generate a report, so it doesn't generate a number. There is a lot of that stuff going on that.
Yeah, let's not go there.
Right, yeah, that's, you know, we're not generating, generating a report for doing things that we should be doing, but just also know that there are a lot, a lot of things that don't make it onto the number chart.
Okay.
Uh, so that's it for the monthly report.
Questions about that, board?
Yeah, questions, comments, concerns? No?
Okay.
In your packet, you'll see our latest speed sign activity was on Franklin Avenue. This was a much shorter run. Uh, the, the sign usually, the batteries usually last about two weeks. This was about, um, six days, but the, the traffic volume is substantially higher on Franklin Avenue, so I believe that's why that was shorter. Uh, but taking a look at these numbers, um, the low risk category is, is four miles over the speed limit. The medium risk category is only five miles over the speed limit. So looking at that numbers, we only have two vehicles exceeding thirty-five miles an hour out of six thousand four hundred and seven. So we're, we're getting better than ninety-nine percent compliance, um, on Franklin Avenue. And it just, it's just a, it is.
Wait, 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 I think the thing is, let's see, medium is thirty plus five.
Yeah.
High is thirty plus twenty, so those two were fifty, over fifty.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So we had, we had two that were in the high risk, but then we have six thousand four hundred and five that were basically in compliance because the difference between thirty and thirty-five is almost negligible.
The reports you generated for me last meeting, the medium risk was actually plus ten, which I think is a better metric, so.
Okay.
Maybe going forward, we'll just, if you can.
I don't know what that, yeah, I don't know what that, uh.
It's plus five, I agree, it's like not very helpful.
It's almost negligible, yeah.
Yeah, we can adjust those, those risk limits based on how the traffic flows, so we can, we can do that. That's part of the learning process, yes. This is the sign that's in front of the Thorn building for traffic coming into the village down the hill. We, I think you've put it about half a dozen places so far, right?
Uh, yeah, easily.
Yeah, okay.
It's, this is the second time on Franklin.
Okay.
But generally speaking, looking, looking at the numbers from all of the locations, we are, we do have a very high compliance rate within, you know, the five miles, being five miles over or something.
Well, I know personal experience, the sign works for me, and the way I see it, it's immediate, you know, maybe the first time it catches me, but I mean, after that.
Right.
So I think, I think it's a really good idea.
Absolutely. I, I, I like it. Um, there's, there's other, there's other charts here, there's bar graphs and, you know, dot graphs, but I think this, this first page is, is most important. All right, now, next thing I have is just to give you some updates on our active shooter plan. Uh, we completed two, two separate range days of training and qualifications that included shooting on the move, cover, concealment, weapon malfunctions, all, all the things that have the potential or. That included shooting on the move, cover, concealment, weapon malfunctions, all, all the things that have the potential or, or are necessary to happen during an event like that. They were both six hour days at the range and.
Raising back the town dump.
It is, it is. So we would also like to thank the town for allowing us to use that facility. But to keep our, our training costs down allows us to spend more time on the range since we don't have to rent the range. We also ordered our, the department pistols, two rifles and a shotgun. Now, they, they are gonna come across at a, what appears to be a higher cost. They are purchased at state bid. But we do have some flexibility in the payroll budget from this year. That should allow us to stay within our budget overall.
And this is a recommendation of the, the task group that we get.
Yes, uh, it's, yeah, Integro, Integro training, our, our trainers suggested that we do have, we do purchase one, at least one shotgun. It's just, it's a different tool than the rifle. A lot of times when you have an event, you'll have twenty police officers with a rifle and sometimes you need a shotgun. There's different tools for different jobs. And if, if we're, if we're on something with, you know, fifteen other police officers with rifles, well, we can be the guy who brings the different tool that may need, maybe needed, so.
Roughly, what's the cost of those?
We had discussed, the two rifles will be roughly thirty-five hundred dollars. The three, three pistols will be about twelve hundred and the shotgun is about four hundred. So, little less than five.
Five thousand.
Around five.
Alright.
Which we had, we had budgeted some of that in the equipment and then with the additional wiggle room from, from some of the payroll, we should be able to be pretty close.
Okay. Questions about that from the board?
No.
Nope, okay.
We're still waiting to hear back from St. Joseph's, but I did talk with the Millbrook Central School District, with the superintendent over there. She has assured us that we will have access to the central school district buildings during break times and specifically the summer to, to conduct training inside the, our buildings here in the village.
Okay.
I know Officer Del Judas accompanied the fire department out to the Duchess Day School when they did their safety walkthrough and familiarization walkthrough. So we are, we're active even out to the Duchess Day School.
Alright.
So lastly, you wanted me to, to speak to the body worn cameras.
Yes. You don't have a chart on that? Okay, just, just.
There's, there's some handwritten notes, or there's some notes there in front of you. I'd like to express that this is opinion. This is not necessarily fact.
That's in the package?
Yeah, I gave, I gave you two sheets. The clerk also has a copy.
Alright, fine. Okay, good. Alright, go ahead. So this is the proposal from the county to fund basically the, the cost for the first five years of us, of army, every officer with a body worn camera for the cost of the village of about seven hundred dollars a year, the first five years.
For the first five years.
The first five years, right? And so the question to Officer Witt is what are, what's your perspective? What's your recommendation? What are your concerns? So it's just, it's right here, I guess.
Yeah, so this, I mean, this is my, between talking with my officers and myself, it's, it's opinion is not to be taken as fact. Correct?
Sure.
We have the pros for it, the pros and cons. There's a greater transparency for the public. Has potential to aid in the prosecution of crimes and criminal activity. Quick resolution of personnel complaints. And they also have a tendency to assist in the de-escalation of situations. Sometimes when people are acting a certain way and then they realize they're being recorded, they change their, their behavior. After speaking with the officers, some of the cons that, that had been expressed to myself was that we feel like it, it kind of changes our, our work environment. Specifically, it's extra equipment to carry that we need to be concerned about damaging and or replacing. It's gonna put extra tasks on all of us. You know, there's times, there are, with these, with this camera system, there's certain defaults. If you draw your weapon, it will activate the camera. If you draw your taser, it'll activate the camera. If you put your emergency lights on to code three, which is all the lights, it'll activate the camera. But there's other, there's other portions of our interactions with the public where we're not putting our lights on and we're not doing, you know, pulling our weapon or taser. That it's just an extra task that while we're already dealing with something, we have to remember, oh, hey, let's turn this on. It's just, it, it does, it just adds another something for us to do. And then at the end of the night, it's, we have to come in earlier to, you know, to dock it, to download it, to do everything else, make sure it's charged and all that. Additionally, there is a, there's gonna be a training expense, which I don't know if that, that, that's not covered, I don't believe, by the county grant.
Okay.
Which will be the initial, the initial training to get us all up to speed on how it works. And then there's usually an annual training with it also. So I know we've, we've done a lot, we've focused a lot on the training that we currently need. Now we're gonna add more training for a different piece of equipment. There are, there are privacy issues with, with having the, the cameras running on all the calls. Some for the general public and some for the officer themselves. Sometimes there could be an accidental activation of the camera while officers are using facilities or possibly, you know, making a phone call to their children, things like that. So there are some, there are some officer privacy issues. There's also some public privacy issues where, you know, we're in, we're in a house or we're dealing with a, you know, a call. And now the entire contents of your, your house and your life are now recorded and part of, part of our department. There's a, the possibility of increased foil requests for, for video, once it exists. It's not foilable if it doesn't exist, so we will have to deal with that. The discovery process for an arrest that's being made, whether it's our arrest or we assist another agency, those videos have to be pulled. They have to be edited only, only for privacy issues and names and things like that. So this is all things that are gonna end up falling on myself. So, and anytime we assist another agency with an arrest, we're now responsible to turn all of that over. So now we're gonna, I'm going to be pulling, editing and sending video anytime we help the sheriff's office or the state police. And it's not even necessarily for our department. So with that, it's gonna create more overtime and suffering other tasks that we do for our own department and our own village. The, one of the other concerns was the initial cost to begin with is very low. But I think the village needs to consider the replacement cost in five years, because it's technology and it updates very quickly. Whether it's replacement or maintenance, we just kinda need to, we need to take a better, a closer look at what does this cost now? And then add ten or fifteen percent and see if we're willing to make that commitment again on year six. So if it's, if it's twenty-seven thousand dollars this year, most likely gonna be thirty or thirty-two or thirty-three, six years from now, for another five year bid.
Wait, wait, wait. Twenty-seven thousand is the total for the five years, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But you also need to, to take a look at year six or seven when essentially the whole system needs to be replaced.
Although, you know, easier said than done, but the county does claim that the contract's for five years and we can terminate it if five years is defined at this.
Okay. Well, that was, yeah, that was one of the.
It would be difficult if we're using, you know, out in the streets and now all of a sudden we're not.
Right, that was one of the concerns also. Is this a program that once we start it, we say, hey, this isn't working for us? Now does that cause a level of distrust with the, with the public? Hey, you know, last year you had cameras and this year you don't. What are you guys up to? You know, it's.
Well, that'd be a public discussion, because it's certainly gonna be significant if you decide to do it and then decide, oh, it's not working or whatever, we're not gonna do it. We're not gonna do this in the dark, so, yeah.
And the, the last, the last real big, like, I guess it, it could have been listed on the concerns is, is the cost of storage. Because I know we have to take a closer look at the, the model policies, but the retention schedule for these, for this video. The first, the first couple of years, it's gonna be okay, but, you know, on year one, you have that video. Year two, now you have one and two. Year three, you have three years of video. And some of these videos may be needed, may need to be kept for a, a longer period of time. I know myself, I've witnessed in, in our department, that what was, was a routine traffic stop in February of one year turned into a massive personnel complaint in November of the same year, nine months later. So what everybody thinks is a routine traffic stop, well, maybe we hold that for six months and then it's gone. Well, now we, we found ourselves with a, with a personnel complaint and, you know, later on down the road. It's just a matter of the retention schedule and I don't think that, I know that memory isn't, buying memory isn't cheap for this stuff, so.
Okay.
Again, some of the other, the, the last concerns that we had, I addressed earlier, officer privacy. Officers are concerned with another piece of equipment that they could damage. And then the last concern is, is clearly the policy, you know, some of the officers are concerned that, you know, hey, what if I have a malfunction? Am I gonna get, you know, in trouble for that? Are, are these cameras gonna be used against our own department for minor, minor policy violations or procedure violations? It's a big concern for, for us in general.
Sorry, let me tell you what, what I see. So first off, the fact that there's more responsibility, I can see reluctance on the officer's part for that. The other thing they don't like is the camera don't go here, right in the Miller vest. And they all have their own setup, where they put their phone, where they put their notepad, whatever, where their taser is.
Right, yeah.
Just can bobble like that, so we're not comfortable with that. So I talked to my peers about this. Because as Deirdre reported last time, it was what, nine of thirteen agencies, nine were for, four were against. It was not a slam dunk at all. And what the other mis- misuses are doing is they're offering a, like a, the one thing about is like a five percent kicker to the officers in order for them to accept this additional responsibility, through a thought process like that. It varies, by the way, there's some of those agencies are union and they've got some big numbers to hold around. But I think if we're willing to consider a five percent hit, increase to the officer's salary, which is the range of, given our salaries are between twenty-one and twenty-eight dollars an hour, would be an adder of about six thousand dollars for a year if we did this. As a way to address the officer's concern with additional responsibility, with the rearrangement and retraining, all this kind of good stuff. What does the board think about that?
I guess I'll start. I have no problem actually with that, but I'm still sort of stuck on the fact that we don't have really a record of complaints from the public or as far as I know anyway, personnel issues that come up that we wish you had this for. So it still leaves me with the question of, you know, should we even have to address these concerns? Do we need cameras? I mean, if we needed cameras, if there seemed to be a need, all of these issues can be dealt with, I'm sure.
Well, you're probably right. We've probably counted on the left hand a number of times, it would've been nice for the officer that had the camera to respond to a complaint. And on another hand, less than five, a number of times, it would've been nice to have, you know, the, whoever was being arrested or whatever, to have, to be able to take. There, there aren't many instances in the village, that's true. How do you justify that? Yeah.
So, I mean, that's my thoughts.
Your thoughts, you don't think it's worth it?
Sounds like it may not be, be worth it, but, you know, I'm willing to listen.
Okay.
I think it is.
How about the rest of you?
I, I, I share, I share Ricky's concerns about, you know, is this necessary? I've been, what, eleven years and I think in that, that total time, we've had two quote unquote formal complaints, both of which were bound, bound to be ungrounded and unnecessary.
And without the aid of video.
And without the aid of video. I know it's a very hot cut issue and people outside of the village may feel like we're, you know, resisting it and we're just being old fashioned, but you know, I, I believe strongly in, in spending your money wisely and making sure you're gonna, you're gonna, it's gonna address a real need. I'm not sure about that at this point, that we really need it.
Okay, Pierre?
I couldn't agree more with my colleagues here. It's creating a problem where there isn't one.
Okay.
Potential unfunded liabilities in the future. I would say a lot.
Alright, Bob, you got it, sir.
I hear everything here and saying, I agree with what Ricky and them are saying. I don't think it's necessary, but, you know, it was sort of laid out in our police.
Modernization plan.
Modernization plan. That we do have transparency for the public, so that's one way of doing it. And it was one of those things that a lot of people in the public suggested. So, you know, I, you know, there's not a lot of complaints.
Yeah.
And I know it's extra work for our police officers, but it is, you know, it's being funded by, you know.
Predominantly by this, by the county, right.
Right, and so, I mean, how many, you know, the training expense, you know, initially and annually. I think in that, you know, the literature that we got, they said that some of that was covered. Helping, you know, write a procedure for the police officers on how to use them was given to them as well. And, you know, how many times we assist per month on an average, that you have did, once, twice, sort of went back, maybe, you know?
I mean, the, these past couple months have done a little bit lower, but
Right.
Six, seven, it's usually, it's usually two or three for both sheriff's offices.
Yeah, so since it was part of the police modernization plan, the public did ask us to evaluate it. Anyone from the public wanna make a comment about this? Cause we're heading down a path basically of saying that we're gonna reject the offer from the county, very generous offer from the county. Anyone in the public wanna make a comment? Yes.
Is it a deterrent, do you think?
I'm sorry?
Is it, oh, I'm guessing, so, is it a deterrent to where, though, a deterrent? I mean, I don't think they get a lot of crime either. I'm never afraid in the.
To the, to who?
To the crim- the perpetrator. I don't wanna comment.
Like, like I had mentioned at, at the beginning, one of the pros is it.
Oh, ma- modifies behavior a little.
Yeah, it, it can, it can be a de-escalation tool. When someone knows that they're being recorded, they, they have the potential to act differently or a little bit more well behaved.
So in some ways, yes.
In some ways, yes.
Although we don't, yeah. A lot.
Yeah, any other comments out there? Alright, so based on what I'm hearing, I'll make a motion that we reject the offer of the county to pursue the body worn cameras. Can I get a sec?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll feedback then to the nine-one-one guy who was asking us, so he knows where we stand.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thanks for your follow up.
The last thing I have is we got seven K two-five-zero, the new car seems to, it had been a, a software problem with the light bar and it seems to have been corrected by a software update.
Unbelievable.
So after.
Something you've probably been messing for a year.
A year and a half of messing with this light bar and it not, it functioning sporadically and not functioning. It all turned out to be a software update.
Alright, so since, now that that's finally worked its way out, can we go, we'll pursue the racks for the computers?
Yes, sir.
We've got some vendors lined up, right?
I do, I have two. I need to find, I think, just one more quote or, or be denied one more quote.
Okay.
And then I'll, that'll hit that, that policy.
Good. Alright, thanks for the update.
Any other comments, questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Alright, let's move on. Bob's home sick. His report basically is six letters of leaves. I don't know what else he could possibly be doing. Yeah, I know. Alright, so he's doing things with the, with the flower barrels and doing some catch base and things, but basically he's doing the leaves. And that, that ends November thirtieth, right, which is a Wednesday? We gotta talk about that, yeah. The second's a Friday and the thirtieth must be a Wednesday, but it's only through November, so if you got your leaves, get them out now. Alright? Okay, questions about Bob? Scott?
All right, let's start with the water system for the month of October. We produce four million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty gallons of water. Average daily flow is one hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty gallons. Formed all monthly maintenance and sampling, installed three new fire hydrants, uh, one on Franklin Avenue by Stewart's and two on Maple Avenue. Uh, repaired a damaged fire hydrant on Dunneen, uh, replaced the curb valve at the sewer plant, had a health department inspection, and had a new fence installed at the entrance to the water plant off of forty-four. And we also replaced the damaged fence down by the new building. If you remember, that's the one that fell by a tree.
Yeah. The tree fell over and.
Yeah, so that's all repaired.
Okay, good, great. All right, get down and see that, that's something I can improve. Any questions for the water report? And there's the daily flow. One thing I wanna mention is, we did have an incident last month. I've been getting phone calls about people saying they wanted to get the reduction in the sewer bill because it was hot and dry this summer, and they were spending a lot of waters, watering the plants. We don't give credits for, um, situations like that. We have a process we follow. The process is that VRI says, hey, there's a leak or whatever. Uh, Scott brings it to us at the public meeting and says, here's what happened, here's what VRI recommends in the board vote hall. There was an exception to that, where VRI gave a credit without us being notified. And so I talked to Don, and I said, we can't do this anymore from now on. If VRI gives a credit, they owe the revenue to, to the village. We have a process, the process has to be public, uh, can't have any of the board members going around saying, no, we don't give exceptions for that. And then somebody says, well, John Gorgel, why don't we tell you that story? Okay, so it's gotta be out in the open. I talked to Don and talked to Scott, I think we're all in agreement going forward, just so. There can't be exceptions that are granted outside of this forum, I think. I think we're all together on it, okay? So thanks for that, what you've done, Scott. I think the examples you brought in the past are exactly what we want to do, and that's gotta be the process you're looking for.
Sure.
Okay, sure.
All right, for October, total effluent flow is two million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and five gallons. Average daily flow is ninety-two thousand, nine hundred gallons, uh, four point four inches of precipitation. Formed all maintenance and sampling, earth care hauled sludge, we cleaned the sludge drying beds. Uh, we completed our annual sewer maintenance inspections, and we installed, uh, fifteen inflow covers in the manholes. We have less than thirty manholes left to put in it, so.
Right.
Out of two hundred and eleven.
Good. Questions for the other floor? There's the other flows?
Yeah, I apologize if I should have asked when we were doing water, but just I wanted to check.
Can you guys talk louder, please?
Sure, I, I, I just wanted to check, uh, could you give you an idea of where we are in terms of the level of, of, of water in the tank below the pumping station, because I know we were in a severe drought in the summertime, and that dropped to as low as between eight and ten inches, so.
Right, yeah, right now, uh, with the rain we had in September, which was six inches, um, you know, the, the levels in the clearwell are roughly between fourteen and fifteen feet, so, which is significant.
That's healthy, okay, good.
Like I said, the summer, we were down to eight, ten feet, you know, plus the flows, if you look, uh, August, we, we did seven point six million gallons, in October, we did four and a half. So flows have been cut dramatically since we've had some rain, so.
All right, fine. Okay, yeah, the rain we got in October, September, comes out of the woods, that's good.
Yes.
All right, Scott, any else?
That's it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, Sarah.
All ready. Okay, so I'm gonna read from the top four, uh, bank balances, um, from October. So for tax account, um, the ending balance was eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and one dollars and forty-six cents. General fund, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Water fund, one hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. And sewer fund, three hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Now that has that ban in there.
Right, so that's the, is that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar ban that's in there?
Um.
Isn't that the portion of the sewer?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
It was one fifty for the retaining wall, two fifty for the sewer.
Correct, so that's why that number is.
Yeah.
Is much higher.
Okay.
Um, so those are the bank balances, um, uh, for my report, um, tax collection is over as of November first, so I will be sending those figures to the county. I like to wait, um, a little bit, just to make sure there's none that come in the mail that are postmarked. Um, so I usually get them out around the end of this week. Um, worked, worked on that financial report with, uh, Karen that we presented last month. Um, and I did submit the nine partners in Linden Lane's CHIPS application.
Okay.
Um, and worked on Bank Rex, so that's, that's the world of treasury.
All right.
For October. Um, we do have some budget amendments, which you see listed there, um, which we spoke with Karen about on Monday evening, um, so if you just want me to read that, or?
Yeah, why don't you go through them, just in case?
Sure.
We have a HRA issue we have to take care of.
Yes, so, um, our medical deductible, um, bank account has gone, has gone low, as you can see in the account, there's seven thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars left in there. So, um, we would like to use the contingency line and, um, fund that. So the budget adjustment would be, uh, thirty-nine hundred, um, and decrease the contingency line. Uh, for tennis courts, um, it was under about seven hundred dollars, so seven hundred to cover the over budget tennis, tennis court line. Um, the H and L to general, uh, fourteen hundred to pay for the new Village Hall sign. And eight, and H and L to general, eight hundred to pay for the holiday lights, which we have that Lamont Christmas tree in there. Um, so reserve fire and rescue to general, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and ninety-nine cents to reimburse the general fund for prior expenses, um, to the Millbrook Fire Department, which overdue account number three, four, one oh four, dot one, dot zero, dot forty-three. After the transfer, um, we will then do a resolution to, um, close the account, that reserve account.
All right, so let's just go through this. So the first one was, we had to refund the HRA to get to a level of about ten thousand dollars, all right? And we're using the contingency account to do that, so that's a budget-to-budget change.
Correct.
The rest of them are moving, um, from the, um, bank accounts.
Correct.
Over into the budget.
Correct.
So we have, we have a bank account for tennis courts, we have the consolidated, uh, trust fund accounts. And then the last one is simply, um, a miss, I wanna say, from the last year's budget. We should've moved it over beforehand, the AUD highlighted this to us.
Correct.
So we're basically doing it, which turns out to be, um, even though we were thirty thousand dollars under budget and expenses last year, uh, this twenty-two thousand dollars we're moving over now becomes basically a, a revenue add to this year's budget, okay? So it's like found money. Alternative would say that we were fifty thousand dollars below our expense budget last year, which is a goodness. But anyway, so it's gonna come over into this year's, uh, budget as a revenue.
Correct.
Any questions about that in the board? Now, don't we need a motion from the board?
Yes.
I'd like a motion that we accept these budget amendments.
Second.
Can I get a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
And then, um, we have that New York class resolution, I'm not sure if the board had a chance to read.
Yeah, okay, so that's kinda late news, we were supposed to get some information earlier on in the month about NY class. This is something that Karen proposed last month, a way for us to take money that's sticking in the bank accounts and put them into, um, some securities that are, let's say, government protected. And this will be part of a, I'm not gonna say consortium, of villages and towns around the state that are doing this.
Correct.
Such that there's billions of dollars in there. And what Karen just proposed is, we start off with moving about nine hundred thousand dollars between what's in the reserve funds we have, plus some cash on hand. Now, question to the board, is any questions about that, any concerns with doing that?
I don't.
I, I don't.
No? Buffy? So if everyone's in agreement with it, then I'd like to, isn't there a resolution you've got for this?
Yes.
There it is. I guess we should read this.
I guess so.
Let me do it.
Okay.
Whereas New York General Municipal Law, Article five G, Section one nineteen O, empowers municipal corporations to enter into, amend, cancel, and terminate agreements for the performance among themselves of their respective functions, powers, and duties on a cooperative or contract basis. Whereas the Village of Millbrook wishes to invest portions of its available investment funds in cooperation with other corporations in or districts pursuant to the NY class municipal cooperation agreement amended and restated as of March twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. Whereas the Village of Millbrook wishes to satisfy the safety and liquidity needs of their funds. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved as follows. That Sarah Wittclerk, Treasurer of the Village of Millbrook, is hereby authorized to participate in the NY class program under the terms of the NY class municipal cooperation agreement amended and restated as of March twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this resolution, can I get a second? Um, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay. Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Trustee Herzog?
Aye.
Trustee Arbogast?
Aye.
And Trustee Doro?
Aye.
Okay, very good, so we're gonna try this out. And what I'm really watching is not so much the interest that we earn, but how liquid it's gonna be. So I wanna see when the money goes in there.
Right.
And the clerk, or deputy clerk, needs money for paying bills, how readily available it is for us. So that's why we're gonna start off with this amount at the, at the beginning, we'll see how it goes. Okay? All right, good. Anything else, um, from your report?
That's all I have for treasurer. Slash clerk.
Okay. Any building?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So for Building Department, for October, we had four building permit issues, are issued. Uh, we didn't have any signed permits, we had two certificate of occupancies, two certificate of compliances, no certificate of uses, and three municipal searches. Total fees collected was nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, so for planning and zoning, uh, we do have a solar panel project on nine partners. Uh, it's a referral from the Building Department to Planning Board. Um, I'm not sure if it would be on the December meeting, I don't know. Um, and we did have our planning and, uh, zoning secretary resign, so.
Yeah, so we have to accept that resignation?
Yeah.
How do you do that?
Just make a motion to accept the resignation.
So Regina, who had stepped in a few years ago just to help out when we had a hole again with Secretary coverage, um, has tendered her resignation. The problem we have is, there's just not enough work there to justify all the administrative overhead the person who's responsible for that has to do, anyways, what we're dealing with. So I've gotta figure out how we're gonna solve this, for the time being, though we have no clerks to handle administrative aspects of the Planning Board of the ZBA. And I sent notice to Matt and to Andy, and asking if they've got any suggestions of how we could do this going forward. But now it's a hole. So I guess basically I'll make a motion that we accept Regina's resignation, can I get a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, uh, he can do that, but that's the way it is. And we'll work on finding some way to, um, fill that void in the future. Okay?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I have a piece of new business that I'd like to raise, just before we talk about the resolutions. We have quite a few constituents here tonight that I can share my concerns, if you don't mind, if we could, if I could, uh, if I could go first?
Um. I mean, before we go through the new and the old business?
It's, this is a piece of new business.
It's new business? Um. Okay, let's see, let me think. We can't wait for like the, uh, the public comment section?
We, we have quite, we have quite a few constituents, some have already left, I, I think everyone should have the opportunity to, uh, to be here for this.
All right, fine.
As, as you know, after the last meeting, you know, and I reluctantly raised this, and it's not a personal thing with, with Trustee Herzog, uh, there was a, a confrontation of sorts during the meeting, which to my understanding continued after the meeting. Um, and, uh, became quite confrontational, I don't know if you're aware of this. Um, but it was on village property, it was concerning village business, and, um, it was conduct unbecoming of a village trustee, I think, and I think a lot of the public, uh, is, is in agreement with me here. And, uh, I'm just concerned about the board's reputation in the community about this event. And I think it dis- uh, deserves public, uh, discussion.
So you're concerned about the, uh, discussion after the meeting or during the meeting?
Well, both, definitely both, uh, afterwards and.
Well, let's stay within the meeting, let's start there. What's your concern with the meeting discussion?
I, I mean, I think tensions were heated.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I think there might be some personal issues here. I think it goes back to the resolution that was passed last year, when Trustee Arbogast and Trustee Cantino were not even at the, at the meeting. So I, I don't have a lot of the background, all I was aware of is what happened during the meeting and what happened after the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
You know, political violence is a big buzzword these days, and, uh, I don't want it to appear right on our doorstep, and it seemed to. And again, this is, this is not a personal thing with you, Trustee Herzog. So there were threats made, to my understanding, uh, threats of violence, um, and, uh, again, it was on village property, this was not a bar fight, you know, after a Friday night, this was right after a village board meeting.
Okay, so I was here for the discussion in the meeting, and words were, 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 for us, I understand that. But I, uh, thought we cut that off and, you know, you know, tabled it and, but I don't know about the discussion afterwards. I don't know what you say about that. What are you recommending, what are you?
I'm recommending that, uh, perhaps the public can, can speak on this issue, or the, uh, there were two gentlemen that were also there, um, had an opportunity to make the board aware of, of what took place, because clearly no one else is aware.
Mm-hmm. Towards what end? Just to hear the concern?
Towards transparency and openness towards government.
Well, hang on, Scotty.
And, and I'd like to hear from, from Trustee Herzog as well, I mean, uh, uh, again, this was a very heated discussion, which after everyone left, there was only a couple people left, and, um, apparently it continued on, I wasn't here for it, but a constituent came to me with it, and I, I don't think he's in a position to be, um, mischaracterizing the situation. So again, I think, uh, the public deserves an opportunity to be well aware of, of how our government is conducting themselves.
That shouldn't be the problem.
What is the threat of violence, we should know that before we speak.
Well, it's hard to know if nobody is allowed to speak.
Shouldn't be a problem, Mayor.
I'm just trying to figure out from a, from the government point of view, the government, we held a meeting, the meeting was over. I was talking about something after the meeting, so it wasn't the government, it was two individuals, one was a trustee, one was not. I don't know, what am I looking for, and I?
I, I think what Trustee Doro is asking for is some type of a public hearing on this. You, the board has no obligation to allow the public to speak at any of your meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Unless there's a public hearing, like, uh, I mean, two of the resolutions for local laws, you do have scheduled public hearings.
Mm-hmm.
You're not obligated to, you, you can, and, you know, you have in the past, but it's entirely up to the board.
I think as elected officials were held to a higher standard than just the average person.
Mm-hmm.
And as such, whereas conduct that might be okay in a civilian context, I, I think deserves higher scrutiny as, as elected officials.
Who was actually there for the discussion? Who was actually there for the discussion that occurred after the meeting? Mike?
I was there, Howard Chu was there, Skip was there.
Okay. So these three people have firsthand knowledge?
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the, what the purpose is here or the point.
That's what I'm wrestling with, I mean...
I, I, I am surprised that no one else on this board is concerned about the situation.
Yeah, that's not true.
We're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to talk around what, what's going on here. Let's just, let's just hear from the parties, I guess. I wanna hear from everyone.
No, I, that's not true. I had a discussion with the mayor that I thought that Trustee Herzog, um... I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. Peter was saying that, you know, he would like to hear from the board and that, you know, what was our thoughts and so forth, and I had a discussion with the mayor after the meeting that I thought that Trustee Herzog's behavior wasn't his best behavior. As we know, sitting on the board, we always don't agree with each other. Things can get heated. And the situation did get heated. I thought the mayor did a really good job at bringing us back together to re, to move forward, and I had mentioned that possibly Trustee Herzog owed Skip maybe an apology for his behavior. Simple as that. I don't know what happened after the meeting. I was not here. I left. The meeting was adjourned. So whatever happened after that, I have no, you know, recollection of that. But I, you know, thought that, you know, that we should be held to a higher standard and that the behavior was not as professional as it possibly should have been, and maybe Skip caught you off guard. But here we are. So... You know, that's, you know, my opinion and my observation of the situation. So...
And I also had a discussion with Trustee Herzog about the same thing. And I think we came to an agreement. I don't know.
I'll give you my feelings on it.
Please.
Okay.
Make sure you speak up so we can hear you.
Yes, if I'm not speaking loud enough, then please, you know, say so in the back.
Please speak up.
Okay. All right.
You can't all speak up?
No, I'm saying... As I was saying, during the meeting, it became a heated discussion. It became a heated discussion, and I, I, if I have to apologize, it's to the entire group because at one point I raised my voice in the discussion. And I'll agree that raising your voice or shouting is not something that would be something that would be advisable. It's not professional. In that sense, I owe, I don't know if you call it apology, but definitely saying, okay, I should, probably shouldn't have used a lower tone of voice in, in the discussion. Second point, I don't apologize for the comment saying that Skip, in my view, had lied. And in order had done so, in order to make sure that the table, the motion that we were talking about would get tabled. And that incensed me, and I got passionate about it, because I don't think that someone should be creating a lie in order to be able to achieve something at a meeting, in order to be able to get something done, and that's what was happening. And I'll stand on that, because that was...
Oh, you're wrong on that.
Okay, but so... All right, so wait.
Leave it right there, okay?
Okay, wait. Hold it, Skip.
And that's, and that, and I'll stand, and I'll stand on, and I'll stand on that.
All right. Mike, let's not, let's not focus on the, the specifics of the accusation. Wait, wait. Let's just focus on the emotion, whether that was appropriate or not. Let's just stay there, all right? I wanna go back to where we were last time. All right, let's not go there.
Okay, fine. And in terms of what happened after the meeting, and yes, Howard, to please, without putting you in a position that's uncomfortable to clarify, if I misspeak in any way, please say so. And I have no, I have no reluctance to have you say, I don't think that's what happened, so please, you know.
Well, okay, Peter called me, and I explained pretty much that I saw the same meeting outside as inside, and I've been to a lot of meetings, and some of them are calm and sometimes over the years, people are excited. I didn't see anything so bizarre that, I've never seen anything like that before anywhere. So it's pretty much if you watched the YouTube, as I told you, video, it was the same thing, except closer to people talking outside. And it was the same sort of thing. It wasn't outside, the parameters of what he saw inside, basically. So anybody who wants to see what happened, pull up the YouTube video. I think it's last month on, it's on there, right? And you, you'll see pretty much the same thing, except people interacting on outside a meeting level. Perfectly, you know, what you can expect periodically from human behavior. So there was nothing much different in what occurred before and after, and it's up to you to use your judgment, you know. Things happen at meetings. I've been at other meetings in the town of Village, I would believe it or not, a little bit more untoward than what I saw here. It just happens.
Okay. So Skip, you wanna say?
Yeah, I'll say, Howard's partially right on the outside, but there was a threatening remark on the outside where Mr. Herzog said to me, "I'll flatten you." Okay? And with that, he left. I, I think that Mr. Herzog's comments are, you know, and outbursts are totally out wrong. And that, you know, I've been attending meetings like this for 65 years. I've never seen anyone act like that. And, you, you know, we gotta have a little civility here. Okay? We need it. And it shouldn't be hyped up like it is, especially from a public official. I've been a public official for 40 something years with the town of Washington. Never did I act like that. I think in the least, Mr. Herzog owes myself and the people of this village an apology. In the least.
Well, I'll respond by saying, essentially for people who are wondering what happened, I'll delineate, and again, Howard cut me off to say if I'm wrong. Howard and I were discussing the very issue outside in the parking lot with no one else around. Skip came back into the parking lot and said, "I left my briefcase inside, would I be able to come get it?" And I said, "I have the code, that's fine." And I unlocked the door and let him come in to have the release. He came out with the release and then said, then said to me, you know, it's really unfortunate what happened inside.
That's right.
And we should, we should try to get this resolved. And I said, I said back to him, "Well, this is not time or place to probably do that, but I stand up what I said and how my feelings on the matter." And he said the same thing, and, and I said, I said, "We're not gonna get you, because I'm still saying that in my mind you lied in the inside, and that's the way it is." And he...
It was never a lie.
And he responded...
Okay, let's, okay, so Mike.
And I said, and he responded...
Mike, Mike, do you, do you agree that the, let's, let's aside the specific outline you by whatever. The way you went about, well, it was not appropriate. Given the motion that was expressed. Will you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. And that you're not gonna do that again? As we talk?
That's not gonna, that's not gonna happen again. But I wanna make it clear that, that the reason that he's saying there was a threat outside is because he got in my face, whacked his finger in my face, gave me a string of blue language I can't respond, and I said to him at that point, "You need to step back or I'm going to flatten you."
I think you started the, the volume on the outside.
This is, this is just not gonna go anywhere.
I tried to diffuse the whole situation when I walked out the door.
Okay.
This is a minor comment. I've been at all meetings and Skip. And I've seen...
I don't know about that.
No, I think so. And that's not the issue you're, you're, if you'd like. And I've seen similar types of behavior occasionally. It's just human nature, these happen at meetings. I didn't see anything that I've never seen before at meetings, so it's unfortunate that...
Doesn't make it, doesn't mean it was right.
That it's happened, it's in the parameters of human interaction. And I, as I said, watch the video in here, you, you see the same thing outside. And it's, it's not the best, but I don't think anything was done deliciously on either party. It's just part of what happened. And if Skip had not come back for his, what he had lost, none of this would have gone any further. It wasn't like they waited each other outside, that wasn't what happened. It was just an interaction that occurred, because Skip came back at a later date. I had, was here, I had to go to the bathroom, actually. Mike looked for me because my car was still out. So I saw, it, it was just an unfortunate situation that occurred, but nothing, nothing so unusual that I would say it demands scrutiny of any nature, just human interaction.
Your motions are running high.
Obviously. All right, 'cause I'm, I'm still dealing with Peter's suggestion that we have public input on this. And the public input will be of people who weren't there firsthand. I don't know what that's gonna buy us.
It's online. It's online.
It's online, okay. No, 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 we're talking about the discussion after the meeting. Yeah.
But putting aside the discussion after the meeting, I think we can all agree, I hope we can all agree with the table, that as trustees, we should be held to a higher standard. And there should be certain protocols that, in the way that we deal with the public. So for my part, I pledge certainly to not yell at constituents who come to this table to testify. And I think Mike was having a bad day, but I think you're not expecting to repeat that behavior. And we're hearing from Peter that he doesn't think that behavior is appropriate, and from Buffy.
I think we all agree that it wasn't...
That in the future, that we observe better forms of behavior toward each other. Because you're absolutely right, Skip. You're absolutely right. Peter, that political violence is certainly unacceptable. But I don't think that's what happened here. But we do owe it to all of you to speak civilly to each other.
Okay, where do we go from here?
I think, I think Peter requested that people in the audience be told exactly what happened. I think that's been done. I've already said that I regret the fact that I had to raise my voice during the meeting, and that shouldn't be repeated. And I think it should end there, but if someone else has a different opinion, everyone has a right to their opinion. So, that's fine.
I haven't heard an apology yet.
Apology for...
For the behavior you're talking about, of a public...
Speak with, speak to the behavior, Mike, yes.
I regret that I raised...
That's not an apology.
Come on, man.
I regret that I raised my voice during the discussion, okay? I don't regret what I said in terms of the term I used because I don't apologize for telling the truth. That's exactly what I did. The tone was not appropriate.
Not an apology. No, it's not.
That's an excuse.
Do we, do we, do I, am I demanding an apology for you for threatening me outside and getting in my face? No, I'm not.
I didn't threaten you.
Yes, you did.
Agree, disagree.
I wanna agree or disagree and move on.
Yeah.
I don't see the value of having a public comment for 50 people up and say their opinion of what was appropriate or was not. Peter?
I appreciate the opportunity for this discussion and for the people to, to raise this, and I appreciate Trustee Herzog's regrets.
I think you should have a little bit of public comment.
We're trying to end this conversation, and we, and we still can't really...
Either all public comment or no public comment.
These people who watch this on YouTube, they've seen it. They, they don't care about what happened outside. They're only concerned about what happened inside.
Tell me all the time.
Well, wait a minute, I'm, I'm waiting to see if we should open this to the public comment. I've asked Skip to speak and Howard to speak, because they were there. The question is, do we want the rest of the public to speak?
I don't think there's anything more important than hearing from the public in the firehouse side, in situations of transparency and accountability and behavior.
Well, that's where we know we're going towards an endgame of a decision. So what decision are we going towards? Because I guess I'm...
There may be no decision at all. You'll just have public input, that's all. And then maybe you'll, there'll be a guide to what the behavior will be down the line.
Maybe there is no public input. I, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure there is. All right, something, I'll ask you a question.
I, I didn't like what I saw.
All right, let me, all right, all right. Time out, wait a minute.
Don't normalize it.
Who wants to make a public comment? Let's start there. Raise your hand, please.
I'm ready for that.
Well, that's good. All right, let's start then. Well, so those who raise their hand, we'll have public comment. Let's do that, because it's gonna be a fire.
Is there a tie on it?
You're not gonna talk long, so...
Well, I wanna know.
Yeah, well, all right, very much.
Well...
I, I will say this.
We all saw it on YouTube.
We have a lot of time, and we'll determine how it goes, okay? No time limit. Go ahead.
It was embarrassing. It was embarrassing. Well, Joe Malova on Spills Road.
Yep.
Everybody knows, everybody in here, name-calling to someone like Mr. Saffery, not acceptable. In that capacity. You got a problem with each other, that's between you two. But in that capacity, when we're watching a, a public forum, should never happen. And, and this gentleman here saying, "These things happen, these..." Don't normalize that behavior. You're elected officials. You should be held to a higher standard. You, you weren't made to speak with a higher voice. You chose to do it. That shouldn't be happening. That's, that's what I feel. And I think an apology, because it happened in a public forum, that should happen in a public forum as well, because I saw it just happen.
Ryan, you ready to add?
Yeah. You know, I've, I've had my issues with Mike, too. I mean, you came off your lawn at me one day while I was campaigning and accused me of something. And I told you this...
No, no, Ryan, can we close?
Wait, no, this was back to...
Just focus on the issue we're talking about. Don't break up old history.
Wait, this goes back to...
It goes to his character.
Yep, his character.
It's not just going on...
It's a second issue. It's a pattern. It's a pattern. And you accused me of something that I didn't do, and you wouldn't even come down and prove that it was wrong with me. I offered that to you, and you became very aggressive. You charged off your lawn at me. I mean, Alan Rockley was a witness to it. It was terrible. And now he comes here and calls another personal lawyer. You can't handle it.
Okay.
That's it.
Who's next?
Okay, so Joe Roche, everybody knows me. I served on the board four and a half years. Howard is right. There, there are heated moments. I get it. The board is tasked with a lot, and also in, when people from the public come in and add to their responsibilities, right? I get it. So what I don't get is Skip made everything easy for everybody. When it's not easy, it becomes heated. It was easy. He printed out everything, handed every, to every board member what he was talking about. Where did the confrontation come from? Why did it happen? Your apology lacks merit, right? You didn't just raise your voice. You waved your fingers. You called him and, and, and a liar. It was completely unnecessary. Why was, where, where did it come from? Why? Over a simple matter that needed, you know, a direction. And it's just waving your fingers and accusing him of something he didn't even did. We don't care if you raised your voice. Everybody raises their voice. Your actions were deplorable.
Okay, thanks. See you.
I was here that night. I was here the whole time. I saw the whole room, what's going on. And Skip, I had a nice conversation with you, but as the meeting went on, you butt in a lot. The mayor asked repeatedly to stop and to let other people speak. It became angry, although I, after being here, because I was trying to figure out what was going on with these sewers and why town people should hook up free to the sewers, I decided, I listened again, just my own, not online, I mean, the, the, on the village website. And I thought they were angry, and I got a better idea, and I thought, I thought, I thought there was rude behavior. I definitely thought...
And I thought they were angry, and I got a better idea, and I thought, I thought, I thought it was rude behavior, I definitely thought it was rude behavior. And I'm trying to listen, so I probably deserve an apology, because I'm trying to figure out what's going on. And I'm a contributing member of this village in many ways, besides taxes, and we said, that's not it, I did a lot of volunteer work. So does Mr. Herzog, I don't know what you've done, Skip, he's been here ten years, and he's done so much work for us, he's probably had a lot of your kids in the boy scout. I don't know, I was doing the girl scouts and boy scouts in La Grange thirty years ago, and you were here working on it. I think it's just petty to bring this up, you got what you won, I don't think the behavior was that bad, go to any school board meeting, it's much worse. I've seen some people in this room say some really rude things on the street. I've seen people raise their voices over trees. So, I was here, I saw the whole thing, there was a lot of rudeness in this room, it was difficult to hear because of back and forth. I just think it's a petty thing to ask, and I think Mr. Trustee Herzog deserves a lot of credit for all he's done, and if this is one small misstep, drop it, I, I was here and I watched the video.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I was here.
Anyone else wanna speak? Yes, go ahead.
I'm gonna just say my opinion, I'm newer to the community, I've been here almost three years, and my name's Debbie Herman. And I have, um, served on boards myself, I was six years president of Georgetown County Public Security. So I've dealt with seventy-two units and a lot of people, and it does get heated in discussions. And I think that when you're talking about higher standards and board members, it's just important that, even though there's heated discussions, people don't feel like they're being attacked. And I think that when you point fingers at people when you're talking, that, that's an aggressive behavior. So I think that that was what bothered me the most, was the finger pointing. And, ne, I don't know what happened after the meeting, but even tonight, the fact that a board member would openly, in public, call someone a liar, I'm sorry, that is a second apology, you can't just come to an open forum and call people liars, it's not right, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Are we just talking about in public meetings, or in the public as well, that you wanna hold the village's trustees and mayor to a higher standard? Hope. Well, then I think the trustee Doro owes an apology as well, and especially to the gay community, a screaming pub faggot on Franklin Avenue.
Well, this is what I said, okay.
It, it comes every, from everybody, true? I mean, it's, you know.
Okay. All right, I got.
If we're gonna hold everybody to a higher standard, let's hold everybody to one.
Sure. I don't know how to codify that, I don't know how to.
But, you know, I, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna be asking for an apology from one, ask for, from all.
Mayor, I would like, I would like to say thank you to the people who chose to speak, I held no ill will towards any of them. I'll take what you said into consideration, and try to behave as I have eleven years professional manner. And I've already said, I apologize to the people in the room for shouting during the meeting, and we'll try to make sure that, that doesn't happen again. If that's not sufficient for people in the room, I can't do anything about it.
Okay, Peter, you brought this up, are we closing this or not?
Yeah, it's a pretty disgusting allegation by a member of the public. I don't know what's so funny about that.
I think, I, because it's gone, it's gone, went wild, obviously.
But I'm glad everyone had an opportunity to discuss this issue, and I appreciate Trustee Herzog's, you know, candor and openness and willing to discuss this issue. So, I think it's important.
Okay, I think we're all committed, we're not gonna do this again, and let's move forward, all right? All right, let's get on to the, uh, public hearing for the change to the zoning code. All right, I guess we should let the room clear out some. All right, so is there a resolution in here?
Yes. I believe, um.
Let's do the, so we have two resolutions for the zoning code, let's do the one regarding posting, uh, signs for the, um, any changes to the, for the planning of the, of the ZBA.
Uh, which is?
So sixteen.
Is that sixteen?
Yeah.
This should be the relatively easy one.
Correct, local law number two, that's re- resolution number sixteen.
Yes.
I did, I did, um, submit to the county, uh, both these local laws, um, I did not hear back from this one. I think they might still be reviewing this one, but I did, I did hear back from the other one, and it's in the fact that it's, it's good.
So, because these are amendments to your zoning code, uh, and they apply village-wide, you're required to make a referral to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. And, uh, and then you have to wait thirty days or until they comment. And so, um, I apologize, I took my mind, I reminded, um, Sarah, but it wasn't until last week. So, she did make these referrals, but she only got comment back on the one, local law number three, not lo- local law number two.
So are we allowed to then have the public hearing?
What you have is, you've got public hearings on both local laws scheduled for tonight, you can have those public hearings. Nothing stops you from doing that. The only thing is, on, uh, local law number two, which you have not received comment back from the county yet, you can't, um, enact the local law until county comments or thirty days pass, which will be by next meeting.
Can we vote on it?
No.
Okay, so we have a public hearing.
You can have your public hearing, open your public hearing, close your public hearing, and then you can enact it at, um, at your.
All right, let's do this, why don't we have a public hearing for both items, but then hold off on the actual vote until next, next time, how's that?
It's up to you, the, the.
I'd like to just keep them together since they're both the zoning code.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
All right, let's do that.
So then, you know, typically by, by motion and second, we open public hearing.
I make a motion that we open the public hearing for the review of the change to the zoning code to allow, um, publication of, posting of signs on properties that are going, coming before the planning board or the ZBA, can I get a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the floor is now open for any public comments regarding that change. And just to recap, that change is to require that if someone comes forward with a change to their property, that goes in front of the planning board or the ZBA, there's already notice required through registered mail to, um, residents in the vicinity. I don't know, all right, this is gonna add to that, it requires that a sign be posted on the property, um, come in days in advance.
It, it's an additional notice requirement, you're already required under your code that public hearings before the zoning board or the planning board have to be advertised in the newspaper, and then their neighbors that have to be notified, and then there's a posting requirement, I believe, as well. This just requires that notice to be also posted on a sign on the property that is subject to the application.
Okay, so anyone in the public have a comment, question, or concern about that? Yes, Bob?
I don't have a concern, I just, uh, I'm just wondering, why you would need to post something on the property?
Because there's been complaints.
Is it like a big sign out?
No, it'd be like a, uh, what do you call those signs we have, all those legal signs?
Lawn sign.
A lawn sign, yeah, like a lawn sign. The reason is because we've had complaints from people in the past, where their neighbors made changes, and they didn't receive the registered mail, or.
Like a building committee sign.
Yes, right, like that. So this will be in addition to that, just to prevent issues like we've had in the past.
Who provides the sign?
The planning board and the ZBA will take care of the signage, it'll be a reasonable sign, yeah.
Simple question.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, any other questions or comments from the public?
I also think it's a good idea.
Oh, okay, good. So do I close the public hearing, Ian, for this?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for that change, does on, can I get a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Now we're gonna open the public hearing for the second change.
Correct.
This is the change to specify, um, outdoor dining requirements.
So this is for local law number three, which is gonna add a new section to your zoning law to, um, enact or impose regulations for outdoor dining in the village.
So I wanna open the public hearing, and I wanna start with, with, uh, Buffy, just tell us feedback, she's asleep.
To, to be consistent, uh, it should be by motion and second, and voted on by the board.
All right, so make a motion, we open the public hearing for that zoning code change, give it a second.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Before I go to the public, can you, Buffy, just tell us what the ZBA put you back?
So, um, I took this resolution, uh, I think the next day after our last meeting, to all of the restaurant owners to take a look at, see if they had any concerns. Um, I had a couple of questions as a restaurant owner, Tanasi got in touch with me as well, we had a nice conversation about some stuff that he was concerned with. And so I will just run through those concerns. Um, page two, um, a draw, a drawing showing the proposed layout of the outdoor dining area. Some people asked, how about a picture, is that okay? You know, as restaurant owners, we're not exactly, you know, artists and can lay out a map, so.
And that's a submission for the, uh, application, what's wrong with that?
So, and picture once the tables, you know, how the tables are going to be laid out. Uh, page three, number nine.
Wait, so board, any comments about that?
A lot of times when we get things for like building department, they'll just take like a picture of like parcel access and like just mark it on there, so.
Good idea.
Simple.
I was like, it's a simple thing we should add, I think, yeah.
Page three, number nine, music of any sort is expressly prohibited. Um, Tanasi said that he has two speakers outside of the diner, which I have walked by a lot, and I have never actually heard music coming out of them, but you said there is music coming out of them, that I think I've never heard. Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, has anybody heard the music? I have never heard the music.
I don't, I haven't heard it, but I'm afraid of okaying that, just because we always talk about how loud it can be, how it affects adjacent, you know, businesses or whatever.
We have a noise law?
Yeah, but it's, it's very difficult to, to enforce.
That would cover whatever you, uh, you got too loud, you had the right.
Actually, that noise law is for like, your, you know, your snow blower, your chainsaw, things like that, that's for really loud stuff. I know, that's my problem, is if we say yes.
Well, you could show it, then you got the noise ordinance, as he said, it's tough, you might recall the bar that, I can't remember the guy's name now, but, nearby in the street there, there, there's a whole thing with a bar that went on for years with neighbors having, they, they, people get out in the parking lot, they talk after, left the bar, too loud, just on and on and on, it's just very difficult to actually.
I'm sure Tanasi controls it very well, I'm just afraid of, it's an open thing, I just don't like it.
I mean, he's had it for years, and no one's complained about it, I didn't even know he had music outside. You know, so.
Well.
I, I don't know if we can reword that, if we can, you know.
What, what's it say, what to say about this?
It says, yeah.
Because it's a public hearing.
A public hearing, yes.
Oh, I, I thought we had to go do some border, we can just all turn in, is that okay? I mean, I don't think these people are on the border, all right, so, can't there be a timeline? Tanasi, thank you, your place is amazing, it makes the village better, yours too. Everybody loves the chairs and umbrellas, the flowers you guys put out, I mean, it's just really, really nice. You have improved this village, amazing, besides all the other cookies, but anyway, I love it, I think they're both great, I've never heard that comment. And, I can't hardly hear the music, because they're very kind with, we have both bands, and I love the band, but they play all over the village, and they're loud. I, do they get permit to do that? I, I don't know, I, I just think a little music is totally appropriate for a restaurant. And, maybe, I mean, I don't wanna hear it, but.
As I, as I said.
I think Barrow has some speakers on their patio, but no one's ever complained about their, you know, their, you know, I don't, should we condemn it? Should we create a public structure, structure, where we'll obviously approve Tanasi's and Barrow's? And we serve the right for ourselves to not approve of each set of property.
I'm okay with striking it completely, or I like that option as well.
Strike it completely, meaning?
Just getting rid of number nine.
Can you tell Skip what was number nine, I can't see.
Music of any sort is expressly prohibited, so if we get rid of it, does that mean we can have it?
Yes.
I would say so, if we currently have it, and it hasn't caused any particular problems to this point, because no one's abused it, um.
Well, that's, that's the problem, is I don't know, if we get to a situation where someone wants to play it loud, and they wanna play it loud.
You have to depend on the noise ordinance, right?
Yeah, and I think that all of the restaurant owners, I mean, everybody is responsible, they're all, um, pretty much, uh, owner, you know, owners are on site, just about every single restaurant that's in this village.
Okay, does it, do you want the board, think we should just strike it?
I, I'd say strike it personally.
That's fine, all right, we'll, we'll allow music.
Great. Um, the other one is number four, oh, sorry, number eleven, the outdoor area shall be closed to customers, and all furnishings shall be removed and stored indoors on or before ten PM of each day. So many of the restaurants, including myself, Tanasi, Barrow, um, maybe the deli, um, we store our chairs and tables outside, um, because it's just too cumbersome to move them in and out, and there's no storage really inside. So like, I stack mine up off the sidewalk, basically on my landlord's right away between my, the building and the sidewalk. Tanasi?
Yours are collapsible, this is not, right, yours don't, don't fill up to the tables?
No, they don't.
Where do you store them?
I leave them as they are in daytime, I don't touch them all in the night, they stay there. I don't have room to, uh, to store them, and it's not really, uh, easy to move, look at my eight tables and chairs. There's no room to put them inside or in the side, somebody has brought them inside, so they don't recover and store stuff. That's really, uh, burdened with.
It speaks well to the community that you don't have to take them in, and there's not people on the sidewalk, so why, it looks nice.
Especially after nine o'clock.
Well, ten PM it says, so it's not exactly like we're bustling pedestrians down the street at ten PM, I mean, sometimes you come all, bowling ball down the street at five, so.
You can't move your tables, and they're very attractive, I, I like them.
Mayor, I think that, it, what was gonna eat outside for winter time, so they, they should be put away, but I'm sure they are.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, like, well, that goes down, yeah.
But I think that, I don't see, I don't see any issue with having them outside.
I'm worried about the first snowfall that catches him off guard, what happens then?
Well, it, down here, it says seventeen, moving down, it says outdoor dining shall be allowed between April first and November first. I recommend that we say December first, because last week was seventy degrees in November, and every table was full outside, because people are trying to get as much vitamin D. vitamin D and outdoors they can get before the winter comes, so I propose-
If you're out there in the snowstorm, members will push them off.
Yeah.
Your snow ordinance starts on December first.
Right, yeah.
It starts on December first, and pretty much when, you know, people stop sitting outside, we pack ours up and start hauling them down to the basement, and it's usually right after Thanksgiving. And I think also with, you know, post COVID, there's still some people who literally still sit outside in the dead of winter bundled up, having a cup of coffee, because they refuse to come into a public place. So, that's another concern with the sidewalks, like, a lot, where I am and the deli is, we have sort of a right of way between our building and where the public sidewalk starts that we maintain, and then the village maintains the rest of it. So that's where like, our tables are stored, sometimes they put out just like a two top there all year round for someone who's crazy enough to sit outside in thirty degree weather. So, the deli was asking, does that right of way, like, actually, does this apply to them?
I just don't like the fact that those tables are not put away at night, I just, I don't know. I mean, it looks, they look nice, they're nice tables, but, um, everyone, everyone else's tables are collapsible, put away, right? Yeah.
Yes, but-
All the flower pots are out at night.
But they're off on the, you know, by the edge of the street.
But in the city-
I mean, no one's time when there's so many, when there's so many more people, if they can maneuver around the tables at night, you never know people, what's the problem having the tables out?
Right.
And no one's complained about it.
Yeah, the only possible, the only possible-
I, I've complained about it, when I've gone through there and there's two tables, and one guy's got his chair out that way and the other guy's this way, I end up doing a thing there.
But that's not ten o'clock at night.
Not ten o'clock at night, you're right. And then they do clean them up and put them, you know, nicely put away.
The only, the only possible problem I see with any kind of outdoor furniture out there is, is in case of an emergency like a fire or whatever, and, you know, I, I don't see that as a justification for not having furniture outside, period. So we should be able to maneuver anything else, whether it's, uh, because these are not, these are not tables screwed into the sidewalk.
Right.
So you can move it.
Yeah, they're movable, yeah. So, again, we're talking about item eleven, and what are you, what are you recommending?
Item eleven, that-
I'm basically saying for Tanasi, we're gonna leave that out all the time.
Well, during the months of April first through December first.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think if we hear, you know, um, complaints, then we'll have to address them one on one with Tanasi, and maybe how he can fix, you know, moving tables, or maybe taking one table away to make more space if someone comes to, you know, us and complains about it, but no one's complained about his setup yet.
So can we just strike?
I mean, Barrow has them on the sidewalk in the evenings, they do remove theirs, um, and, but they put them up against their building.
The rest of the wall, yeah.
Uh, because they, again, have that extra sidewalk where on the opposite side, they don't have that.
Sure.
So-
Buffy, is there any objection to, to closing by ten? Because maybe we need to keep that, but removal language about the furniture.
I'm gonna sleep for two and a half hours by ten o'clock, so, I have no objection. So, I mean-
No, I can't say I sleep people on the street, but no.
What time do you close, Tanasi?
Nine.
Nine, right.
I, I think if somebody's at Barrow late, you know, we should kick them off the street. I, I, I say we strike eleven, I say we adjust seventeen to December first. I, I read your other comments, I was in, in agreement with them, so I think, um-
Okay, does the board agree with, uh, striking eleven? Any problems with that?
I, I don't have any problems.
Okay. And then seventeen, we'll make that December first?
December. December first.
Okay.
And then I just wanna be clear that if, like, on our side, if we wanted that, you know, we have that right of way, is there, if I wanted one table out there with that bench that I have there year round, I mean, I've always had that there year round.
This is where they-
But I never put it out like during snowstorms or anything like that, or when they're cleaning the sidewalks. But it's that part that I maintain and the village doesn't.
Well, if we're taking out eleven, you're covered. No?
Well, the only thing-
I'm saying that I-
No, after December first.
After December first.
After December first?
She wants to keep the table out.
I always keep a table with that little white bench that I've had there for now fifteen years. Literally out there year round for someone who wants to sit outside on a sunny winter day and have their coffee.
Like a, like a park bench?
Yeah, it's like that little white park bench, and then I put-
I don't consider that even dining.
And I put it, but I put like a little deuce in front of it.
No, no, that's, that's the table and chair you're talking about.
No, chucking that little park bench that I have, if you're looking at Bubba's, to the left, there's a little white park bench I've had there for like fifteen years, and in front of it, I've put like a little two top, that someone could sit down and eat their muffin and have their cup of coffee.
Oh, so it's a bench with a table?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's-
Like a side table on, right?
Yeah.
So it's never gotten in the way of snow removal?
I wouldn't put it out when it's snowing, no. And the bench has never gotten in the way of snow removal. And Matt only does up to a certain part, he's always very kind and, you know, does a little extra swipe and so forth, but like, where it is, like close to my door, I usually maintain all of that, so.
Mm-hmm.
Is it the public sidewalk, or no?
No.
So then I think, I don't think it's even-
Applicable, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the deli and us, that we just wanted to make sure exactly, we didn't wanna, you know, we just wanted to make sure we were following the rules, because the deli's tables aren't even on the actual sidewalk, they're on that little right of by, right?
Yeah, right by the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We just wanna make sure that we're all talking the same thing.
So do we need to specify that, or?
What do you think, Ian?
Yeah, I, I kinda agree with Peter that I don't know that that constitutes outdoor, quote unquote, outdoor dining that would fall under this.
This is not an official-
Apparently, you, you've been doing this prior to even outdoor dining being, um, you know, existing in the village.
Yeah. I've had tables since I've opened, that I actually went in front of the village board when we first opened in two thousand and six.
You did.
And they approved, uh, Kimma Blockland has it on record that he came by, approved all of those tables and so forth, even before dining resolution was put in place.
But as far as this bench go, the bench is against the building, it's not, yeah, I don't, I mean-
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a pre-approved wrench, we're okay.
So it's not, it's not applicable to the code?
Yeah. I don't think so, to me, it doesn't, it's not something that is regulated by this law.
Okay, fine, just one question.
Okay, fine, that's good.
Great.
Okay.
Right. So those, those were all the concerns that I had, no one else came forward except, uh, Tanasi. I think those were all, uh, did I get other concerns?
Alright, so then, anyone else in the public have a comment, a question about the standards?
Okay. No one else came with concerns.
Alright, good. Anybody else in the audience, public hearing, comments, questions, or concerns? Alright, so we've agreed on the modifications that she brought forward.
So my recommendation would be, after you close the public hearing-
Yeah, which we'll do now.
To reintroduce the local law as amended.
Okay.
Um, in order to meet the requirements of the municipal rule law, the, the local law in its final form has to, to be, um, on the desk.
So why, so why can't we take what we've just agreed to with the amendments, amend the document, send it out to the trustees, and have this discussion at the next meeting, which will be after thirty days?
Correct, and then resend this to the county, they're not gonna have any issue with that.
Okay.
And they'll send another sheet similar to this that probably says the same thing, local matter, local concern.
Okay, good. So let me make a motion to close the public hearing, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we've got a game plan, which will be a modification that we just agreed to, send it to the district attorney and planning, and next month, we'll have the actual vote
Yes.
on both those changes together.
Correct.
Will that be one motion or will it be two?
You, you gotta do, it's two, two separate resolutions, two separate local laws.
Two, okay, fine. Alright, got it. Okay, that finishes the zoning law topic, right? Alright, trustee Oliver, guys, can you just update on the personal decorations?
Yeah, so, I'm meeting with Bob on Monday to walk with him, so he knows exactly where the trees are going. He goes and picks up the trees sometime next week, believe it or not, and starts putting them up. Um, I just sent out an email, uh, blast for volunteers to come help decorate the trees on December nineteenth, um, which is a Saturday. Everybody wanna participate, please come. Um, and, uh, Kevin has been so kind to show me the way of how things are done, so, um, we're on track.
Okay, good.
So I don't know what else you-
Are you posting anything as far as asking for volunteers to come help light the trees?
Yeah, I posted something not too long ago, I think I'll, I'll try to send it to Sarah too, it's, uh, so she can post it. Um, we don't need that many volunteers, because you get too many people in the mix, so, um, we've sort of broken up the trees where you only have to decorate six to eight of them. We give you the lights, and, uh, we'll give you a section, and then you go out and do that, and then, um, Kevin is going to go around and hopefully, um, check the outlets and help me out there, when he has time, if not, he'll pass it on to me. And together, we'll get it done.
Sounds good. Any questions? Alright, so, can you just update on Pray the Lights?
Me?
Yeah, it's Pray the Lights.
Well, I want the interest of courtesy, I'll make this great, he goes. Um, the main change in schedule this year is that the town is not doing the Santa meet and greet, so all of a sudden, we were left with something bare down there, so, I lucked out, and Lori Decker wants to do a, a meet and greet with Sam Claus, and she has Mrs. Claus, and at the Angels of Light building. So, Peter had mentioned he thought it was dark and cold, and so I thought that's a perfect situation, nice, lit, warm, she's gonna provide snacks and drinks, and we're working together to get, um, young people from interact, to help, we're gonna have crafts, um, I, I think I have these girls who work at community, um, they, they're gonna help with face painting activities, she's gonna have them make cards for sick children. It should be really nice, and that's gonna go though, early, three thirty to five thirty instead of five to six.
Alright.
So I hope nobody objects to that, I think it's gonna be really nice. Santa feels honored and excited to ride on a pirate. He's gonna pass out long, he's never had such a thrill. Alright, anyway, so, um, all that, we'll have some other activities near the tree before six. I think the second graders, I'm talking tomorrow, they might do Christmas carols, um, Vicky, maybe you and I'll talk about that, because you want singers too, so I got, if we got school kids, their teachers, we're talking about having them sing, so that would be cute, I thought it was, okay. And we're gonna have the children and vehicles lead off, um, Peter said he'll help us try to get some people for that. The VFW color guard, after we've never allowed marchers, and I still don't think we should allow them within the, um, the vehicles, but to lead off, I thought it would be nice, they'll follow the little kids, and I thought they can maybe move them along too, because they take a long time. And, um, and then they're gonna have a color guard, and they're dressing as candy canes, because that's probably not, so it should be nice, so I thought we should have them. They're gonna go followed by Santa. Santa's gonna come from the firehouse, light the tree, he won't be down there before, because he'll be at the other meet and greet, so I hope that's okay. Um, we're being sponsored by Central Press, the Bank of Millbrook, and Rugies, they decided, one more time, to give Q ninety-two the opportunity, and I met with them for about an hour today, um, Jim from the bank was on the phone with us, and they promised us a lot of things, and Mr. Whalen is going to be involved too, and we're gonna hope we get exactly what we're asking for, and if not, then they'll reconsider. Um, so John McDonald once again volunteered to be emcee, kind of DJ, so we're gonna have Q ninety-two down by the bank, I think Mr. Whalen's gonna do there, or by the hardware store. And they'll set up, they're gonna have games, bring prizes, they have giveaways, Central Press has giveaways, and then, well, I don't know where Central Press is, but some, maybe they'll be with John, actually. Just pass the light, we'd like to put John McDonald, and so we'll have announcements and activities down there, as they come up, we've always had, I only did one here, but we had complaints that on the ends, people couldn't hear, so I figured if the Q ninety-two is down there, they get here, and then John is in the middle, that would take care of the east side. Or hopefully, we'll find out, rather than investing in mics.
Alright.
Um, I've got lots of people who are work, well, people here and others have agreed to work on traffic safety, getting volunteers, um, and organizing the children for the kiddie cars, and cleaning the trash the next day. I'm getting students from the schools and a lot of other things to get things going, working with Lori, but we all need help, lots of help, so please, consider volunteering, let me know, or anybody. Cleaning up the trash is a big thing, I know it seems silly, but, and I hope it'll be easier, because I don't want, we're asking no candy off of the vehicles. Parades all over are doing this, I know it's fun to throw, but it is a mess, and if they're asking their constituents not to do it, and it becomes what's usual, I think if we do it and somebody gets hurt, it really makes the village more liable. So I, I really just don't wanna take that chance, so I'm telling everybody, no candy. Um, I also don't want any political vehicles, the biggest thing I got last year was, um, a vehicle that was expressly supporting candidates, and that just could get so out of hand, you know, that it's gonna be here and there, so no political vehicles, and I don't know how much I can force it, but I really try, and Jared said he'll support me now.
I thought you were gonna allow people to hand out candy, people on the side.
Oh, yeah, but not the floats, not off the floats.
Not, sure, you don't throw them from the float, because it doesn't make them to the-
So the volunteers go down and hand out the candy, or something like that.
Yeah, and interact kids are dressing up, and they're gonna pass out-
Yeah, so the, the, can we hand it out?
Multiple pieces of candy, I mean, we don't wanna, you know, pour it in.
Sure, okay.
No, we want it to be fun, but safe, and, um, you know, um, Q ninety-two also complained, by the way, Vicky, you'll wanna hear this, they said Joe Daley could not get out where he wanted to be, because people were throwing candy, and it's dangerous, they're hitting him.
Okay.
That's what police just said, just today. Anyway, I think that's about it, you guys.
Any questions about that?
Oh, I'll contact all the fire departments, I haven't reached out to them yet, but I will tomorrow.
Alright.
Okay.
And I think you put up a signup for the floats on the website.
Oh, and it wasn't working, but-
So when you're working, put that working, so we can actually go online and sign up.
So everybody's been contacting me, but I thought it'd be nice, and then they could see the rules right there.
Alright.
Um, so anyway, tell them I, I apologize.
See, you are getting a lot of interest from-
I probably have ten or so right away, um, and then a couple fire departments have talked to people, can't, but I wanna send out official.
Alright, do you need to give a copy of that to Sarah, just for the files?
I did.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, sure.
Alright, public comment, anything the public wants to discuss? Can we discuss it all? Alright, let's go through the boardman updates.
I can have a quick.
Yes, yeah.
So, I just think we should reconsider, this five more miles doesn't make a difference, I don't know. I have no idea, but I just remember New York City had that huge campaign to reduce the speed by five miles, does anybody remember that? There are all these ads about how much less the injuries are with a five mile per hour difference, I just wanted to throw that in, I don't know if you guys did research.
Oh. You can reduce the speed limit.
Well, to say that, you, ten miles over, does that mean there's gonna be no tickets if I go ten miles over the speed limit? Remember, five miles was a medium risk, and then we said we should raise it to ten.
No, no, we're just adjusting what the limit is when we collect the data, we're not changing the speed limits, this was the, the program is set up so it says, what's your speed limit? Thirty, okay, how many people are within the speed limit? Then you can say, how many people are within five miles over the speed limit? How many are within ten miles over the speed limit?
So why can't you, well, okay, I don't care, I just didn't wanna, it sounded to me that, I think you guys said, what's the difference between five and ten miles? And I just remember hearing all that, that it was quite a difference in the injury, so if it's just a charge, and it doesn't make a difference.
No, but I think the idea was to capture more people at a speed.
Yes, but-
Because if you go up to ten miles, go up another five miles, as opposed to-
Well, the ten miles was in the high rate of speed, so you were capturing them.
But we're trying to assess the risk, so if you add another five miles, you'll capture more people that are engaging in risky behavior, and then we can assess that.
But, I think you're wrong with that, because zero to five was a medium risk, above that was a higher risk, so you're saying people are gonna get-
No, no, what we're saying is-
More people will be less risk?
If the speed limit's thirty, we were saying to set a limit at thirty-five as to be the median risk, is not enough windage, I guess I'd say, so we're gonna change it from thirty to thirty-five to make it thirty to forty, so that's the capture that we would get.
Less people will be in the high risk.
And less people will be in a higher risk, that we're- And less people will be in the high risk, so we're gonna raise it to forty to fifty, yes.
Okay.
Alright. The idea is just to get more data that we'll look at, that we'll, uh, what it is.
Well, it sounded like it, anyway, alright, I'm done. I was afraid it sounded like it didn't matter.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Cantino, any updates?
Uh, yeah, just quickly, electric vehicle chargers, two developments that I think are very positive. Bob's here, we can give him some, lots of credit for it. Um, we believe that tomorrow night, you guys are, have resolved any contract issues and they can pass the contract and, but the board can pass the contract.
The town board?
Town board tomorrow. And there was a site visit and apparently our site is gonna work at Village Hall.
At the town hall.
Town hall, sorry, and, um, long meeting. And, um, we can start marching forward.
Yep. Also, Bob's here. Any comments from Bob?
Well, the resolution is, uh, been accepted by Livingston. Some adjustments they made, the lawyers, you know, they, the top end after, and so they've accepted it, they've signed it. Livingston Energy will sign off on it tomorrow night and, uh, uh, I spoke to the mayor that they are getting the spaces ready and, um, they'll give us a timetable. I think they're ready to come down and put them in.
So you're talking about two stations that can serve four cars?
Four cars.
Yeah, nice.
And I think that, you know, in the future, um, you know, when there are more electric cars in the, in the area, I'm sure Tribute Garden will then, uh, have some of their own. And, um, I mean, if they can put a couple of mine parking lot behind the, the, sure street.
Well, that'd be nice. And we'll take care of the, we'll just take care of the signage, you know, EV station, that direction.
I forgot that Livingston said, Livingston Energy where they provide a couple of, uh,
Oh, good, okay.
You might.
We'll take care of that. Alright, good, yeah.
Just, just letting you know that the library, uh, in our discussions with municipal smart communities had said that they would be interested at some point in using that one space in front of their library on, if it's a friendly lane.
Yeah, friendly lane.
As, as an EV site, if we wanna do that going forward. So that's something else that could be done in the future.
Yeah, okay.
That, that's another to- topic for, different topic, but, but for later on.
Yeah, okay. But that's, that's actually the street and, um, whether that's a, should be, any caps probably not is another discussion.
So.
Okay, alright. Anything else, Vicky?
Nope, that's it.
Trustee Herzog?
Okay, a few things. Uh, I'm, I'm working, working with, uh, with Genevieve Blasen on the assessment document that goes with becoming part of the municipal smart communities and getting, uh, getting a plan together on how we can approach things going forward and also get credit for what we've already done. Uh, we had, we have had two meetings since our last, uh, village meeting and we finished, uh, that one meeting yesterday so that the assessment part of it is all, is all done. So we've gone over all, all one hundred and ten pledge elements and decide, we talked about which ones might be of some interest to the village and move from there.
Okay.
And now it's gonna be put in the hands of Jillian Matthews from the Cornell Park of Extension to make up a whole report and, and give us an idea of kinda developing a roadmap in the future where we can be able to, uh, move what we wanna do for future projects and also see where we are in terms of, uh, in terms of what we've already accomplished and we can get credit for. It's a broad certification. Uh, in connection with that, there's also, uh, the village is, uh, looking to join the town of Washington and the town of Clinton submitting an application for a grant, uh, through the, uh, Mid Hudson Regional Council. Uh, and if we get that grant, then, uh, we'll be able, doing a natural resources inventory can be pricey. And if we get the grant, then we'd be able to get a significant amount of points and do it for free, cause they'll be picking up the coys, the cost of professionals and reviewing maps and doing things in conjunction with, uh, trained people. So that's something that's gonna be moving forward and you and I have already sat down and created a, an application and we'll.
Well, actually, I think it was mainly, mainly the town are kinda taking the lead here, like, cause we don't have a lot to contribute there.
Yeah.
So basically, we are giving them our inputs for them to make the, the one application.
Right. Well, the town, the town, the town of Washington and, and, uh, the town of Clinton and us will get together, cause it's one application, so all of our information has to be joined on that one application. So we, we've done our part on that. We're gonna move forward with that as, uh, soon, cause the grant application is due by the end of November. So that has to go forward. Also, in terms of, uh, other things, I attended a CAC meeting, uh, on November second and one of the things that came out of it, I just wanted to be able to, be able to say publicly is that there's an ash, an ash tree beetle, which is getting into ash trees, uh, in parts all over the northeast. We happen to have a few, I don't know exactly how many, we have a few right along Elm Drive. And, uh, so we had a discussion about the fact that there's probably a good chance that in the next three or four years, they're gonna have to come down, cause they've been, cause they're currently, they don't look it, but they're infected and they will die. So that's something that we have to be aware of.
Well, it's five of them in my backyard.
Is that right?
So that's something.
So they're here.
Yeah, so they're here, they've done damage already and they will be, you know, will be seeing the effects of it on some of the trees on Elm Drive. Come to vote, so we'll have to, you know, be aware of that. And Scott, uh, S- Scott is at this point working with, uh, um, working with me as well on being able to get our pavement started and our pavement project started. And so he's already worked with me on identifying all of the things that had, that might need to be done in conjunction with repaving. Uh, I've heard from Peter Sander and we had a walkthrough scheduled for November eighth and it got postponed till November fifteenth because Brian Houston is just finishing up the fieldwork, having to do with all of the surveys necessary to, uh, to work with.
Okay.
For them. Um, the reason he's somewhat delayed is the fact that, believe it or not, he's made numerous inquiries and the state can't come up with a map of Franklin Avenue that shows things, like it doesn't exist. Obviously, it has to exist, but he's having some difficulty trying to come up with it.
Wow. Okay.
So we've got a scheduled walkthrough for November fifteenth. If we can get a hold of that information, uh, you'll be part of that.
Good.
And the last thing is, uh, by November eighteenth, if we wanna do phase two of the sidewalk, the, this, the sidewalk phase, uh, and replace sidewalk, then there's a new, there's a new grant available, which and we have to submit a letter of interest by November eighteenth, similar to what we did to get, to be.
So we definitely will do that, right?
So we definitely wanna do that.
Yeah, I'd like to get this rolling on an annual basis that we're getting funding in the next summer, we'll replace the sidewalk, get funding to replace the sidewalk.
Yeah. Right, so. So hopefully, we'll be doing the section from Front Street up to Deidre's Flower Shop, uh, this year, for a congligatory this summer.
Next summer.
Okay, this coming summer, uh, and we'll, uh, we'll, by that point, be, have our application to process to go through the same thing all over again in twenty-four.
On the opposite side of the street?
On the opposite side.
Yes, okay.
So that's, uh, that's, that has to be.
Okay.
And, uh, that's it.
Okay, trustee Dora. Nothing here. Okay, trustee Aubrey, guys?
One thing.
Okay. Uh, I've got two things. One of them is that, um, we are anticipating imminent replacement of the fence that is along the side of the water tower. Drawn hate, this to, gross deterioration. I've also asked, this is, uh, being done by contractor for Key Mobile, who were the first people who went on the, on the water tower. They actually put the fence. And so they're supposed to go and replace it. I asked that that fence along the, the, uh, neighbor's property be replaced and also that they button up the fence, take down the fences inside, replace that, so we actually have controlled access to the back room of all those equipments, pieces of equipment. So they promised they're gonna do that. Um, if they don't come soon, like this month, which was the latest promise, I asked Bob to give me a comparative quote of three thousand dollars to actually just replace the fence next to the neighbor. Talk about that, what, if things don't happen by December first. And the last thing is, I'd like to, uh, entertain replacing the, the lower level windows at the village hall. For last estimate was twenty-four thousand. I'd like to go and get an estimate and bring it to the board for discussion later. To update the, um, estimated cost to replace those village hall windows, which are rotted and are just terrible. Um, as part of the process of trying to upgrade that hall. And the last quote was twenty-four thousand dollars, in which case I wanna use the consolidated, um, trust fund account to do that.
Are you, um, requesting that we get the most energy efficient windows?
Uh, unfortunately, what we're trying to do is replacing time, the same kind of architecture they have and they're kinda unique, so it's not like I can be too specific. I think they are, compared to what we have, of course, are much, much more energy efficient.
It's the paint thickness, there's a.
Yeah, I don't think it's, like, it's nothing fancy, like nothing double painted, anything like that with a gas, no.
Well, it's something, something that could be helpful as a factor if we get some kind of energy rating, uh, and find out what it is that it might qualify as an act, activity where it's done, if we get points for applying smart communities. And that'll put us later on actually getting funds to counteract it.
I'm gonna go get the quote again and let's just see, we'll see the specifics there. I'm sure it's got an energy rating with it. I'm not, I'm sure it's.
You can get almost anything you want made up, then it's not costing you some money though.
Yeah.
It'll match anything, usually, you know, but.
These windows, for some reason, I went to three vendors, Bob, Cole, Cole and I went to three and only one guy was willing to go and
Do it.
and actually do it, yeah. Because of the unique architecture, I think.
So Marvin and what have you, company like that, usually will do those kinds of.
Really? Special build?
Special build, but, and I, I hear Anderson saying they'll, they'll do things like that these days also, but you should look, look around a little bit more.
Alright, fine, we'll do that.
Or if you'll reach out to some of the local contractors, cause they have window, you know, people that they work with, you know, specifically.
Actually, the, the guy who came in was a guy, was a local, not too, he might be in kind of nearby. He does deal with some kind of, you know, big, big company that could put windows down.
I know Kyle at New Dimension and, you know, Bobby Campbell, you know, all of them have people they work with. If you had them come in and say, we wanna replace these.
Okay.
Could you give us a quote? They would go to their window guy, blah, 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 so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The guy in red post, uh, named, uh, Hops and Windows, that's all they do is windows.
Yeah, sure. Is that right?
All they do is windows, yes.
Yeah, and, uh,
Alright.
might be worth a look at, and see what they come up with.
So we'll work on that with Bob. I just wanna bring it to the board as a proposal for, uh.
They definitely need to be done.
Yes. Okay, good. Alright, that's all I've got. Um, next meeting is gonna be on December fourteenth. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Thanks, everybody.